All the meetings. We're telling you, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen.
Present.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Tucson. Councilmember Dee Simmons. Councilmember Jay Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
The five present, there is a quorum.
We have a motion to excuse councilmembers Dee Simmons and Tucson. So moved.
Support.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now rise this for able, have a moment of silence and the pleasure of relief. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Support.
Are there any? Updates or changes? Mr. Byrne? Oh, okay. Thank you. You. Any other updates or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Um, okay. Now we'll need a motion to move into closed session, please. Um, can you name the, what is it? The MCL code? When making the motion?
Just so council knows, both the, both of these issues will have the MCL fifteen point two six eight E.
Perfect. Thank you. Oh, I can do it. Um, I move that we move into closed session um, in reference to um, pending litigation uh, city of Ypsilanti versus Anderson and city of Ypsilanti uh, versus S Greenlee. Related to MCL one five point two six eight. It's been moved.
Support.
All right. Click, like, please call the roll.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
With six yes and two absent, the motion carries. We'll adjourn to closed session at six oh two.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna head to the downstairs conference room, I'm assuming. Audience. Okay.
I'm doing great.
We have to make it on the floor, but I have, I'm gonna bring us back. Okay, we're gonna bring us back. Um, I'll entertain a motion to go back into open session.
I move that we uh. Go back into an open session as.
Port.
We have to, can we voice vote that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Good evening again, audience. Um, we have already done our call to order, our roll call, pleasure allegiance, agenda approval, and our close session. So now is our opportunity for public comment. You will have three minutes to address counsel. Please state your name and address if you feel comfortable. Um, and we'll start with, if there's anyone signed up on the list. Or if there's anyone in the audience physically who would like to address counsel. Notice, anyone on Zoom?
Anyone participating in the minute uh, meeting virtually, if you'd like to make comment, please raise your hand now and you'll have three minutes to address counsel. Counsel, no hands have been raised.
All right, seeing none, we will close public comment um, with hope that maybe we'll have some folks at the end. So. Um, next we have our work session for Water Street um, with AKT Peerless and Carlisle Wortman, and I believe Katie, are you getting us started on that? Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, we have an update from our team of environmental consultants, AKT Peerless. We have Scott, Lou and Jeremy on their investigation on the site and um, what we've done so far in the last few months. We also have Mateo and Ben with Carlisle Wortman, whom the city has contracted to help the city evaluate development proposals for Waters, the Water Street site. Both teams have been working together to create a comprehensive remediation and development plan for the site. Our intention is to update counsel regularly as we move forward with the Water Street project, and this is the first of that, those updates. And I believe Scott will lead us off.
Evening, Scott. Thanks, Katie.
Can I interrupt a minute? Let me do something about the air conditioning. It's kind of freezing here.
Oh, okay. Thanks. All right. Just a tiny bit. I have no, yeah. Good evening. Hi, Scott. You all can get started whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm Scott. I'm a senior environmental consultant with AKT Peerless. Lou?
Lou Saltz, also with AKT Peerless, leader, senior environmental consultant.
Good evening.
Um, so tonight we just have a presentation that uh, we are putting on CWA about Water Street. As you know, um, MEDC uh, has given a direct allocation of four point four million dollars to the city. Uh, to continue environmental investigation activities at Water Street. And conduct remediation or the removal of contaminated soil from the property. Um, one of the most important points about that funding is that it has to be spent uh, by the end of December of two thousand twenty-four. Or the money goes back uh, to the source. Um, so what we're gonna start with today is um, just some history about Water Street. Um, and some background on the environmental investigation activities that have been conducted uh, over the past couple of decades. Uh, so um, in the eighteen hundreds, the site, it was mostly vacant um. Or used for residential purposes with some light industry along the Huron River. Uh, there was a flour mill along the river. Um, there was part of a public square at the northeastern corner of the property along Michigan Avenue. And some marshland along the southern property boundary adjacent to the river. Between the eighteen eighties and nineteen eighties, the site was used for a variety of um, commercial and industrial uh, purposes. That included uh, mills, lumber yards, uh, bulk petroleum and oil storage, dry cleaning, auto service and repair. Um, some general commercial uses. Um, Gilbert Park, which is the baseball diamond in the lower picture. Uh, replaced the public square that used to be along East Michigan Avenue. Um, and then for um, our discussion tonight, the most important uh, historical uses with, with respect to the contamination that we're gonna be talking about. Uh, is a former Detroit United Storage Yard. Um, Detroit United Railway was an electric railway. There was also an auto manufacturing facility uh, next to the DUR Storage Yard. And the former marsh area along the river over time was filled in with non-native soil and a construction and demolition debris. Um, beginning in the nineteen nineties, the city began acquiring Water Street. Uh, at that time, it consisted of dozens of different tax identification parcels, as you can see in the survey map that's on the top. Um, during acquisition of the property, the city conducted due diligence on each of those tax identification parcels. Over time, additional environmental investigations have been done. There has been some limited remediation um, at Water Street, including along the Water Street Trail. Uh, there have been brownfields plans uh, put together. Um, and then, you know, the city's uh, you know, current goal right now in continuing to move forward with environmental investigation. Is to set themselves up to do remediation next year to make the site more marketable. This map here just gives a visual representation of a lot of the environmental investigation activities that have been done um, up to about two thousand sixteen. Um, some of the finer points on the map, including the, the points with green and red around them, represent soil boring locations. Um, for those of you who are not familiar, a soil boring is typically a two inch diameter hole that's drilled into the ground to collect soil samples. Um, the boxed in areas of red, green and black represent different types of contamination that were identified. By previous consultants and referred to as, um, excuse me, areas of concern. So, um, given all the historical uses of the Water Street site. There are many different kinds of contaminants present in soil. Um, a lot of those contaminants are regulated by the state of Michigan, but what we're here to talk about tonight are partly chlorinated by fennels or PCBs, which are regulated by the US EPA under the Toxic Substances Control Act or TASC. Um, what we have found over the past few years is that there seems to be three main source areas of PCB soil contamination at the Water Street property. Um, these are the three that I mentioned a few minutes ago, uh, beginning with the auto manufacturing facility, which is on the upper left. Uh, outlined in red. Um, the PCB concentrations in that part of the property are relatively low compared to the other two areas, typically between one and ten parts per million. Um, we believe that the source of uh, the PCB contamination on that portion of the site is incidental releases from electrical transformers. Um, and potentially machinery that was used in the factory. The DUR Storage Yard is right next door to it. What happened in the DUR Storage Yard is the, the railway would bring in railcars and work on them. And an electric railway, each electric railcar has an onboard transformer that has dielectric fluid in it that contains PCBs. Uh, back at that time, PCBs could be present in the dielectric fluid at concentrations of more than sixty thousand parts per million. Uh, so very, very high concentrations. And then finally, in the marsh, uh, the source of the PCBs uh, located in the marsh. Um, is likely fill material containing PCBs or PCB containing waste. Um, what we have found in the DUR Storage Yard in uh, the marsh are PCB concentrations uh, greater than fifty parts per million. In some cases. Some background on the cleanup levels that TASC uses for PCBs include um, one in ten parts per million for what are called high occupancy areas that are used frequently. Uh, these would be akin to resident, residential type land uses. Um, the higher cleanup levels of twenty-five, fifty and a hundred are associated with low occupancy or non-residential type land uses. Um, depending on what the concentrations are and the type of land use, uh, there are certain restrictions um, on how you can use the site. Um, for example, if you have PCBs at a concentration greater than one part per million, you have to have a deed restriction, no matter what. Um, if it's a high occupancy area and you're below ten parts per million, but above one, uh, you have to cap uh, the area that's affected by PCBs. Um, and then the uh, restrictions get a little bit more restrictive uh, as you move into the non-residential or low occupancy cleanup levels. Um, so what our investigation activities have focused on over the past few years, um. Based on historical soil boring information. We believed we were dealing with three distinct PCB hotspots where PCBs are found at concentrations greater than fifty. The significance of fifty parts per million is once you go above that threshold. If you excavate that soil to dispose of it offsite, it becomes considered hazardous waste. And hazardous waste is much more expensive to dispose of than non-hazardous waste. So that's a financial burden that the city or developer may have to face in the future if these are, these concentrations are not addressed now. What we found, um. Originally was what we thought were three hotspots, so we expanded our investigations around those hotspots. And unfortunately, what we find is that the PCB concentrations uh, that exceed fifty parts per million or even a hundred parts per million. Are more widespread than what was previously known. Um, on this map, it's color coded uh, to the maximum PCB concentrations. Found in soil boring locations that were drilled on a ten foot by ten foot sampling grid. So it's roughly five thousand square foot area in the DUR Storage Yard. And maybe double that size in the marsh. And green represents concentrations that are less than one part per million, and that is what you want for residential high occupancy land use without restrictions. There's not a lot of green boxes in these areas. And the, the message there is, under current conditions. Um, residential redevelopment is not possible in either of those areas and. The PCBs uh, are not defined uh, to an extent that we could propose a cleanup plan to EPA. What we are proposing to do is expand um, the TASC site characterization sampling, which is a ten foot by ten foot sampling grid throughout the DUR Storage Yard, which is about two point three acres. As well as the western portion of the marsh and a select portion of the eastern part of the marsh, which is currently, uh, I believe what's called the tree farm. Um, what we're seeing in the DUR Storage Yard is that the PCB concentrations seem to be confined to the upper two to three feet of soil. Uh, which is consistent with surface spillage um, from historical land use by the DUR. Uh, in the marsh. The PCB distributions are random horizontally and vertically, which is consistent with burying PCB containing place. Again, we, we would need to expand those investigations throughout those areas so that we can define the PCBs um, in order to establish cleanup plans that the EPA will review and approve. And that would set us up to do remediation work in two thousand twenty-four. Um, the other um, components of the proposal that's under consideration tonight include a comprehensive environmental conditions report. Which we would plan to prepare after remediation activities in two thousand twenty-four to document. Um, as much of the environmental work that has been done at Water Street to date. So that the city has a living document, if you will, that. Um, establishes what the environmental conditions are, what has been cleaned up, what remains, sort of a roadmap to continue. Um, environmental investigation and remediation as necessary, and perhaps even use as a tool in tandem with um, future developers, um, for example. Um, to continue targeting contamination to make the site reusable. Um, and then finally, uh, part of, uh, an extension of the comprehensive report. Uh, may be some supplemental investigation along the part of Water Street that fronts Michigan Avenue. Um, which may or may not uh, be the first phase, if you will, of the property to be redeveloped. Um, so this map is, is just a depiction of what we are proposing to do. In the upper left, there is an area surrounded by a blue dashed line. That is the former auto manufacturing facility. We're currently under contract to do what's called an incremental sampling methodology investigation of that area. As part of the proposal that the city council approved last fall. Um, so we're working with EPA right now on putting, putting together a sampling and analysis plan uh, to do that investigation later this summer. Um, the red boxed areas, the top center is the DUR Storage Yard. So we would expand our ten foot by ten foot sampling grid across that area. Um, as well as the western portion of the former marsh, which is directly south of that. And then the targeted investigation in the eastern side of the marsh, uh, which is based on. Um, analytical data that were collected by previous consultants as well as by AKT in two thousand sixteen. Is the little box on the right there. And then up at the top in orange would be potential supplemental investigations along Michigan Avenue. Um, uh, so just to conclude our part of the presentation. Um, what we're trying to do is give the city the clearest picture yet of PCB distribution so that we can approach and engage with EPA. Uh, conduct remediation activities next year, uh, using the remaining available funding next year to do that. Um, in order to improve the marketability of the site. And through the environmental conditions report and perhaps supplemental investigation along Michigan Avenue. Um, help the city develop a strategy uh, to continue to move toward read about at some point in the future.
Thank you so much.
Evening. My name is Michael Pass Lockrum with Carlisle Wortman Associates. So to piggyback on Scott's presentation with AKT and the work that they'd be doing. Kind of the best way to look at what CWA is gonna be working on with this project is kind of summarized by what would be done this year and what would be done next year. So this year. You know, as Scott kind of highlighted, AKT is gonna be working on the what and the where. You know, what type of environmental circumstances exist, where on the property, um, they'll be looking at now and the past. And geography plays an important part in all this because where certain things are kind of dictates what can be done and what needs to be done. And it'll allow us to kind of work on the how. So in this year, what we're really working together as a team is the what, the when and the how. And what CWA wants to work on is the how is. What is the strategy for the property? What is the best way forward? And the, the beauty in working with AKT on this. In the present is that that strategy will be able to evolve as AKT's testing and results kind of paint a better picture for us. And really kind of allows us to. Best develop that strategy for next steps. And, you know, again, kind of look at. The phasing and timing of what could take place on the site, you know, in the coming years. And so then when we kind of look at the next slide. Really what kind of sums up in two thousand twenty-four is. At that point in time, CWA, AKT and the city would have enough information to start working on the who and the why. And the who is really based around. Will have probably what will be the most comprehensive collection of environmental information that the site has ever had. Either with the work that you're doing in the present, but then also the collection of the information from all the past testings and studies that have been done on the site. And so with that. It'll allow us to kind of look at. What partnerships do we need to develop moving forward? And kind of with that information, the, the beauty with some of that will be is that. We'll know what we know. We'll have a much better picture of also what we don't know. And that's, that's useful because that's what starts to drive those partnerships. Okay, who else do we need to work with to kind of get this to the end goal? And so the end goal kind of plays into the why, right? And I think that we all can work together as a team to kind of figure out what are the city's goals and objectives with the site? How does that inform the strategy? How does that inform the partnerships? That really was. In all honesty, I was expecting Scott to take a little bit longer because he gets way more technical than I do. But I wanted, but given time of the sensitivity of time, I wanted to be able to kind of give you that bird's eye view of the who, what, when, where, why, and why CWA. And AKT and the city have really kind of, in a short period of time, developed a great teamwork and partnership. To kind of approach this from really all the different facets that are, are gonna be needed to see something. Define success however you want, but to see something happen at the site.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Questions from counsel for their uh, Scott? Or I'm, I'm so sorry, I can't think of. Mate, Mateo from CWA. Thank you. So questions? Uh, councilmember Dee Simmons?
Hi, thank you. Um, let's see here. So a couple of questions just from the presentations. Um, just for clarity for me. So when we were talking, so we're talking about PCBs and not the other things. Is that because? Those things are not considered to be issues that we'll have to deal with at some time in terms of the different contaminants? Or because they've already been dealt with?
Um, the other contaminants would have to be dealt with, but the PCBs are, in our opinion, the uh, most expensive by far environmental issue to deal with. Um, so from our perspective, um, it would be the best bang for your buck, if you will, um, to tackle the PCBs with the available funding.
And some, would any of those other things also be dealt with because of dealing with the PCBs process?
Uh, possibly. Um, so. I may get a little bit technical here again, but there are different types of environmental sampling that we do. And for the proposal that we have right now for PCBs, um, as Mateo put it, uh, figuring out what is where. Um, there are other contaminants commingled with the PCBs. But if the PCBs are going to be excavated and disposed, it becomes less of a concern to know what other stuff is there. It becomes more of a concern for the landfill to know what they're accepting. So we do a different kind of sampling called base characterization sampling. Um, it's, uh, it tells the landfill what they can expect to leach out of the soil once they accept it. So it's um, far less extensive. Um. The same, I mean, per sample, it's more expensive, but you need far fewer samples.
And then, um, you also had talked about uh, depending on. The levels of PCBs in different places that there would need to be deed restrictions to. And so I was just trying to say, like, try to figure out, so that would be, the deed restrictions would be to do what? To kind of name that there's contamination at this space, so for, for folks would know. And then how would that be? Um, how will we kind of know where things would go without kind of a specific site plan for what might be developed there?
Well, um, I guess I would say, first of all, um, we have a surveyor working for us, so. Each of our soil boring locations will be surveyed. Um, when we propose cleanup plans to EPA, we have to define what the cleanup goal will be. And then depending on what the cleanup goal is, uh, we have to satisfy um, certain requirements under TASC. So for example, in the DUR Storage Yard, if we were not able to clean up to less than one part per million, but we got to less than ten. Um, our cleanup plan to EPA uh, would say, you know, we, our cleanup goal is ten, we've achieved less than ten. Um, and then their requirement, or if it's going to be a high occupancy use, is we have to um, install a cap. Over whatever remains, and it has to be done to the satisfaction of EPA.
Okay.
And the deed restriction tells a future owner exactly where that, that area is and what's there.
Mm-hmm. And then, um. Uh, in the presentation, so it said that this work will be hap, this work will happen, and then in two thousand twenty-four, based on, then cleanup would happen. Based on those findings with what's kind of left over from this work. So what, um. Do you anticipate, like, will, after that, they'll be kind of like, we think we can, with what's left, clean up this amount to this capacity, or how does that get impacted?
Well, I think that is um, a decision for the city um, as to what they want to prioritize. Um. I guess, you know, in, in my opinion, if. Uh, if it were up to me, you know, if I had the money, I would target the highest concentrations first because they're the most expensive to deal with and dispose of. Um, but really, it can be a strategic decision too, based on what the city um. Would like to see, and depending on the results, like. Uh, maybe one area, it's not so bad, we can open that up. Um, so we're less than one, maybe it makes more sense to invest the money. Uh, for the acreage rather than invest the money for the more expensive disposal.
Hmm, oh. Um, and then my. Last, I'm just trying to catch notes while, my last question, this is, I think, more for Mateo, I think, um. Who, just, a-again, this is just like for clarity for me. So when you were talking about like, figuring out like different partnerships, I just wanted to kind of. Get a sense of what that was referring to, like different partners that would develop. Parts of the parcels based on. The PCB levels or to get funds to further clean or different things like that.
Yeah, so one of the things that's, I think, important to establish is that. You are going to have a much cleaner site by the end of two thousand twenty-four, but you will not have a clean site by the end of two thousand twenty-four. So with the information, you know, as it evolves from AKT, we can look at. What kind of partnerships, call it, call it developers or call it, you know, other groups that might come together to s. Have the wherewithal, have the capacity, have the experience with these types of sites. Not just from the perspective of being able to deal with them, but what is kind of the best way in which to deal with them? So Scott was referencing like. There's some strategy behind where you might be looking to develop. If you guys are taking care of the hotspots, then we need a partner to come in who is gonna have some skin in the game and some more cleanup. It just won't be the real expensive, cost prohibitive. Kind of roadblock things that we've hit in the past. And that answers your question.
It does. And so then my last question, just off of that, is that then, so then. Once there's this um, assessment that's done. Then would you all come back with saying, okay, here's the strategy, this is how much money there is left, this is what this means. Here's some different ways of how we would approach that for us to make a decision at that point.
I mean, I, I don't think I speak out of land to say yes. I mean, that's kind of the goal, is to. Take what they've found, take what we know. take what they've found, take what we know and say with what we have. Right. And again, kind of the point being this is still what we don't know, but that list is way shorter than it is now.
Hmm.
This is kind of the next step forward. These are the groups. So this is the way we think we should entertain these additional partnerships and who they should be with.
Thanks. Um, my name is Ben Carl, Carl Alwam Associates. Thank you for having us back here tonight. Um, but right now, any site plan or any land use plan for this is a complete shot in the dark. Because we don't know the level in the location of where the real dirty stuff is, right? Um, in our experience and in talking with AKT, um, many of the, most of the development community is not good or has experienced dealing with this really dirty stuff. They can deal with the stuff in the other parts of the site that are less dirty. They've got experience with that. A lot of the development community does, but they don't have experience dealing with this really dirty stuff. And so part of the strategy here is to complete the testing, to know where the really dirty stuff is, know how to get it out of there, get it out of there. And then in that meantime, we would be partnering with you as a council, your community, your community partners, and the development community to come up with a site plan and a game plan for the redevelopment site that works with what we know it's there and what truly what economic development and development partners actually know how to develop sites that are not perfectly clean, clock cleaner than what is now, but not perfectly clean. So it's a little bit of a puzzle piece right now in terms of we don't know what's going to happen where on the site until we know what's out there and what we can clean up. And so any sort of site plan you received so far and any sort of community input would be a complete shot in the dark because we don't know enough to tell you what's there, how we, how we move the building blocks around. And we'll, we'll know a lot more in six months, um, if this, if this, the testing is undertaken. And then we can come back to you with a much better game plan about how we move forward. So probably a little more detail than you wanted, but I just wanted to add that.
Exact amount of detail that I wanted. Um, are there additional questions in council? Mayor Proton?
Um, I want to mix comments with with questions. Um, one of my basic questions was how does the budget for this testing impact the remediation? You've already answered that. Um, this is what 1.3 million for this out of the four that that's available. So, um, we'll have to prioritize that. Um, one is a, it may be a rhetorical question, but right, one I have to ask because I can hear my constituents asking this question. Um, in in the presentation or in our packet on page 27, there's a list of all the times that this parcel has been tested and it's year after year after year after year, some by AKT, some by other people. And so the question that will be asked, I'm going to ask it now is with all of that testing, why don't we have a better picture of this? You know, you've come to us and said there were three things identified, you know, three spots that are identified. And it's like, okay, who did that testing? And why wasn't that more comprehensive and why wasn't this? Some of that was your testing from AKT, but some of that, how did this pass without having more information?
So, um, my name's Lou and I'm with AKT also. Um, I've been involved in this since 2014. Jeremy McCallum also. And that's when we were contracted with you guys as your environmental consultant. And part of what we did then was start to look at everything that happened in the past and try to piece that together. Um, I guess some of the things I can tell you that, you know, you had multiple plans, different developers with different consultants that were looking at portions of the site and not always all of the site. So when they were focused on whatever they wanted to do, that's what they were focusing on. And then whatever, you know, happened to stop that development, whether it was economics or they ran into difficulties or whatever, things just stopped. So you end up with a site that literally has had industrial development on it since the 1890s. Then for the last 25 years has had kind of like a quilted outlook of a hodgepodge of trying to figure out what needs. And then all of that ended up with nothing in the end. I mean, your parcel still sits out there almost 40 acres. You guys all know what it's looked like. And all that data is there. Now, some of that data even is too old to use. Most of it isn't. So part of what we've been trying to do, especially in the last five years, is pull things together to see where we could put, you know, the money to the best use. And obviously, you know, you didn't have this money then. And in a lot of instances, we had hardly any money, but money was applied where it could be to try and pick off what we could at the time, right? And as Scott has mentioned, and what we've talked about is the worst of the contaminants out there are the PCBs. So and unfortunately, the PCBs are also the most expensive to get rid of. So I guess to answer your question about all of those other areas, I mean, they're still there, but they're more like the smaller issues and the larger issue is the PCBs. And to to get this whole property in a position where you can hopefully market it to a developer or developers where they have a better shot of finally going in and finishing it off. That's what we're trying to do and we will make use wherever possible of all of the previous environmental work that was done. And that goes to the comprehensive report that we want to put together. But this right now is just focusing on the PCBs. And with, if you approve this, you will have at the end, I think about 2.7 or 8 left for hopefully remediation. And that's like what you were saying earlier, like, what's the next step? Well, once we get all of this information together, starting in 24, then the idea is hopefully by the spring that we can have a much better plan in place that shows these areas now further defined to where you can target that money. And then we go through the process of vetting that out to potential excavation contractors. And through that process, then you end up, you know, removing that soil wherever possible. And that would take you to the end of 24 then. So now you have all of that money being used to get rid of the worst of the worst. Also, in the past, no one really targeted the PCBs and I can't, I can't tell you why, because that wasn't part of me. I mean, there were, there were some borings that were done out there for PCBs, but usually as add-ons, I mean, some of this stuff obviously was known, but I don't know why it was never an emphasis because I wasn't involved in any, in any of those developments.
I've, I've been surprised by that as well. And I had this conversation with previous mayor that the the surprise that there were PCBs and, and I'm not sure why people are surprised, given the the nature of the industry that had been there. So I'm not sure. So the answer, the short answer that I can take out of this is that the, um, the interest at the time and the funding is what limited the data that we've had to date.
Yes.
They, they were piecemeal studies going through it. This is going to be comprehensive. I totally appreciate that and I definitely think we need to move forward with that. One comment is that, um, you know, all of the, the development, uh, all the plans that we've seen so far have this gradient, um, going from Michigan Avenue with businesses down through this with a gradient of housing, with the more expensive housing coming, um, closer to the river and to the south. And with this, you know, I anticipate that next spring, when we have this conversation again, we're going to have to look at that again because we've, we've got two developers who are on, on, on hold with this. And they're looking at this and going, oh yeah, we're just going to do this the same way. It's like, well, that doesn't make any sense. We can take care of the hotspot and they can deal with other stuff. But it seems to me from the way this looks is that we should be radiating out from there with businesses in the middle, cap it, put concrete on top of it, if you're going to do that, I don't want to do that. But, um, you know, you're going to cap it and use it for, uh, functions that don't, uh, have people spending a huge amount of time there. And so businesses in the middle with, um, or defined by the contamination that's left after the remediation, or that goes on to the, to the developer to clean up to their expectations for the, for the use that they're proposing.
And that's also why, like with CWA involved in this as well, I mean, that's one of the first things we talk to them about is that, you know, like I said, I've been here since 14, but in another life, working for another consultant, I did a lot of work at, um, the former paper mill. So I've been around this city since around 2000. And, um, I graduated from Eastern. And also, I mean, back then, you know, things have changed, right? Um, but you're right in a sense that when you looked at a lot of the previous developments, they were residential heavy with higher end houses. And of course they wanted to make use of the river, right? So they wanted to put stuff down there, but unfortunately, when you look at the distribution of what we're finding so far, the worst of it is down there. So, you know, when we spoke with CWA originally and we talked about this, then we were like, you know, the development portion needs to get kicked down the road a little bit till we find out some more ideas. Then you can take the two folks that already, you know, applied and you can welcome them back in at the time later on with anybody else who might be interested. And now you got a better plan, right? And then it's going to help them because the other thing to stress, and I would tell you this right now, whoever comes in, they have to have skin in the game. They have to be prepared to pay for environmental cleanup themselves because there's still going to be environmental cleanup.
Thank you. We're tapping the brownfield. They can still tap into brownfield funds, right?
Sure.
Um, are there other members of council who have questions? Oh, may I present yet another?
I guess I had one other question. If, uh, when we're talking about capping, um, then presumably depending on the use, uh, of that capped area, that would have to then be filled over um, with a certain level of, uh,
Yes, um, and don't quote me on this. I believe the TASC defined cap is six inches of concrete, but we can propose alternative types of caps to EPA. They just have to consider the risk posed by an alternative type of cap. Um, we just met with them yesterday and they said that, um, they have approved alternative types of caps in the past.
Right. As I was thinking, it was like, what kind of impermeable barrier would you put over the top if it's only concrete that kind of severely limits which, which you can do with it?
Yeah. Residential development too, there's also parks, right? So even though it's low occupancy, you're also there for a very low amount of time. You're not living there on a house.
Right.
So, I mean, you have a riverfront with a trail, but you know, there's all kinds of options for maybe putting a park down there too, that runs parallel to the trail in that fill area. Now, these are all things that would be looked at down the road.
I can just see the headlines. Idi lets children play and
Contaminated.
Contaminated.
Yeah, I love that. Anyway.
Um,
um, everyone don't play on it and they'll be like, oh, this is great. Are there other members of council who have questions? I feel like a lot of them have been asked that I had, so. All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into then the, uh, supporting resolution. Council member Sweet.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti has contracted with AKT Peerless to investigate PCB contamination on Water Street. And whereas the investigations have revealed additional PCB contamination in the former Detroit United Railway or Jarred and the two former Martian land areas. And as whereas targeted further investigation in these areas will provide the city with the clearest point, clearst picture of contamination and allow for a targeted approach and remediation of the site. And whereas AKT Peerless will develop a comprehensive environmental conditions report that will help inform the city's decision making of the Water Street site. And therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the contract with AKT Peerless for $1,495,000 and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign on behalf of the city subject to approval of the city attorney and I so move.
Or
Move and supported. Are there additional questions or comments before we all the roll? Mayor Proton?
I think the most contaminated site that got capped would be a great place for a parking structure.
I knew you were going to say that.
You just trying to start.
Any other, uh, comments or discussion before we vote? Day nine, clerk Kanga, please call the roll.
Council member Sweet?
Yes.
Council member Tucson?
Yes.
Council member Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Council member Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Council member King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
He's right now. Um, all right. Mayor Proton, you have our consent agenda.
Resolution number 2023-101, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number 2023-102 approving the minutes of May 16th, 2023 city council meeting. And resolution 2023-103 approving the Clemis IT agreement with Oakland County. And I so move.
Support. Move and supported. Check the line up for the roll.
Council member Tucson?
Yes.
Council member Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Council member Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Council member King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Council member Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Um, yeah. Yeah. Council member Dee?
I have a question about, I didn't realize that we contracted Oakland. Where IT.
No, no, this is police.
That's police.
This is police.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, uh, council member Dee Simmons, you have, um, resolution 104?
Uh, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the proposed ordinance entitled 2023-24 tax levy ordinance be approved on second and final reading. I so move.
Or
Move and supported. Any discussion, questions? I've already did that. Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Council member Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Council member King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Council member Sweet?
Yes.
Council member Tucson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Council member Jay Simmons?
Resolution number 2023-105, um, this is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that an ordinance entitled an ordinance to amend budget appropriations by department and major organizational units for the fiscal year 2022-23 and 2023-24 be approved on second and final reading. And further that in accordance with section 119 sub two of Public Act 621 of 1978, also known as the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act. Parameters are hereby given to allow the city manager's authority, city manager authority to approve budget transfers between programs with the same, within the same fund. And only council may authorize transfers between funds. May the rest be read into the record and I so move.
Support. Move and supported. All right, discussion. Um, city manager, do you have anything to start?
Yes, sure. Good evening, mayor and council. Um, as you may see in your packet, there is, um, a memo uh, that does, um, itemize the proposed adjustments that council made at the last meeting. Um, with the proposed adjustments suggested by council. Um, what we found, uh, initially we had a 1.8 million deficit. Uh, with the proposed additions, um, our deficit rose to 2.7 million. So, um, the budget committee, uh, did attempt to, um, go through the line items and make some suggestions. And that is what you will see, um, in the memo, some of the suggestions that we made. Um, some of, most of them, we tried to stay on the staff side, um, as far as when we were, uh, looking at things to remove. Um, and I don't know if you want me to go through them each or the things that we suggested for removal, but you do have them, um, in your possession. And so, um, I guess what we're looking for on tonight is for council to decide if they'd like to make further, um, amendments or recommendations for cuts, uh, so that we can attempt to lower the deficit. Um, uh, we would like you to take our suggestions that we've made, but we do realize that you, um, it is council's desire that we will, uh, follow. So at this point, um, also you'll notice also we had to make an addition to the budget, which was, um, the DPS roof, which was not, um, previously included in the budget. And so that's 500K. Um, that's mandatory. So, uh, we thought we were doing pretty good at first. Um, eliminating some things, but we, um, are at 2.7, uh, million. Um, that we, we, um, eliminated the software, which was, uh, 200K. Um, we decided that we would continue. Um, we decided that we would continue with what we have. Um, I think that request came from the building department mostly, and it was to allow for permits to, um, be done online basically, um, and talking with staff. Uh, we can still do that with the system that we have by paying, uh, only five hundred dollars more. So we decided we will just keep that, um, at this time. Um, some other things we decided and we would hope that council would agree. Um, one was, um, the non-armed response team. Uh, we are recommending that we continue in collaboration with what the county is doing. Um, because at this point, we don't believe we could sustain our own dispatch. Um, and also, um, it included a vehicle. So one of my recommendations was to remove that. Um, because now we, they're doing, um, limitaries, right? We don't have the results on what the non-armed response team would look like. So I think it's better that we would collaborate with, uh, the county and in our, what they're currently studying rather than, um, branch out on our own. Cause that was, um, but that was from, um, councilmember Simmons, Desiree Simmons, and she will probably speak to that. But these are just
Yeah.
some suggestions, uh, for the housing trust fund. Um, it was a hundred thousand dollars, uh, suggested. And also there is a suggestion to earmark twenty-five hundred of that for barrier busters. So we decided to put that, um, together rather than have a hundred thousand, uh, for housing and then a separate line item for barrier busters. So that would make it seventy-five thousand for housing trust fund with the twenty-five thousand going to barrier busters to just combine those. Now, the commission fair and field day, my suggestion was that, um, we eliminate that and that we will collaborate with other events by maybe getting a table. You know, um, Juneteenth did contact us to see if the city wanted to have a table there. And I think if we were to, um, collaborate with other events going on, there are events going on in Park Ridge. And if we could put our information out there, you know, rather than just having our own, you know, field day, you know, because a lot of people will be coming to those events already. So maybe we collaborate with them and the city have a table to present commissions and things like that. Uh, the storm sewer mapping, um, that's programmed in for twenty-five, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five already. Um, let's see what else we have here. Um, for the top lot amenities, um, we suggested the seventy-five thousand, um, occur over three years, meaning that we address one top lot at a time instead of, you know, three. So we'd only be, um, we'd only be spending twenty-five thousand at a time. And so that would, uh, reduce that. Uh, we kept the resurfacing of the pool. We would use some of the funding from the, um, community mental health. Um, uh, village funding. Uh, for the youth mini grants, uh, that we would fund that through the marijuana, uh, permit application funds for the grant writer. Uh, we decided that we did not put, um, an amount to it, but looked at it. And so we went ahead and just stuck in fifty thousand and we decided to not pursue that because our newly, um, created position of the economic development and equity planner includes, um, grant writing. And that's Katie. Um, that's included and that's a new job. So, um, we just need to track that and make sure that she knows that she's responsible for searching, uh, grants and also being a part of the administration of grants. Um, Christopher does some of them, but one of her major, um, responsibilities in that job description was, um, grants. Uh, we left in the city hall elevator. It's mandatory to meet ADA, um, compliance. And so, um, we had already budgeted three hundred thousand for that. And so we're going to use a hundred and fifty thousand from the community mental health village to, um, meet the total cost of four hundred and fifty thousand. That's mandatory. Um, again, the, uh, software upgrades, which was, uh, basically just, um, converting to the SNA. We took that out. We'll continue as we are. Uh, we removed the marijuana consultant. Um, I believe that we are able to, um, figure out chapter seven for ourselves. I'm waiting for some feedback regarding the maps that we distributed, but I think we can handle that. Um, and let's see here. Uh, the building contractual services, uh, we left that because it should be paid for, for the, by the permit fees. And we left the DPS. Oh, okay. So that was the addition, the DPS roof. So those are the things that, um, we came up with some potential revenue sources. We're increasing the parking permits. Um, and, uh, uh, what else? Oh, increasing the building permit fees if possible. So, um, that would take some investigation because of course we can't charge more than, um, it costs us to actually do the work. So, um, that's something that we will have to explore. Um, another thing that came up was, um, for the time being, to eliminate offering, uh, waivers for, um, special events. I did look up the cost and we're spending a lot. I looked at, um, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three, and we spent like twenty thousand each year on waving, um, special event things. So I'm recommending that we put a freeze on that. Um, that's just my suggestion. Uh, and also on sponsorships, wasn't able to, um, we didn't have that many sponsorships as much as we do for fee waivers. Fee waivers were all twenty thousand. That's a lot for each year, each year. We didn't have any in twenty twenty because of COVID. But, um, so those are just the suggestions that, uh, we have at this time. And, um, the youth mini grants, um, we said we'd take that, we'd take that for marijuana. But also if we, um, as if we follow the policies, then I believe we, we will probably lessen the stragglers, you know, because we're saying you need to have this in by a certain time and when it's cut off, it's cut off. You know, and so those are, um, just a few things that we're doing to try to still be able to contribute, right, to community, um, nonprofits and things that are going to uplift our community, but at the same time trying to curtail, um, our spending. So, um, I think that's all I have. Um, oh, I, I should go into, um, capital improvements, um, a little bit. There was some, um, there was some things that were included, uh, regarding the freight house. Um, the deck and security um, that we, for twenty thousand that we thought could, um, be removed or, uh, set aside for future. There was also in the, uh, capital improvements for the freight house built in by replacement of ten thousand that we thought could probably be, um, removed. The canopy replacements could probably be, um, pushed down and we're hoping that our partnership with the musical, um, society will help because they did indicate that they wanted to help with improvements to the freight house. So, um, by taking this out, hopefully we'll send a message and show them how much we do need, um, their collaboration for improvements um, to that facility. Um, the other was, uh, senior center ventilation and suppression for twenty thousand and DPS aggregate material stall. And I believe that I'm Reagan is, and I'm missing anything. No. Okay.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, I have a couple of questions then, um, to start. So, this is related. So going back to the, the grant writer piece.
Hmm.
And then you stated that the economic development and equity planner is a new position. So there have been some things combined there? Cause we already had the equity planner or equity role.
Correct. And the part of the job description is grant writing.
So are we not, I, I just want to understand like the, the structure at this point, since we, we don't have an econ- economic development director at this time.
Correct.
Are we not going to be?
No, we are not looking to fulfill that. We are using, um, the funds from that position for, um, Carlisle and Wardman.
And then the economic development and equity planner will then be supporting in, in.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Where does that fall in the, like in?
Planning department.
So then that will fall under Christopher.
Christopher, Christopher works very closely with Katie, but Katie reports to me.
Okay. So this new role will report directly to the city manager.
Mm-hmm. Well, she's already there.
Oh.
Katie.
Right, right. But it has a new title. So this new role, entitled.
It's not a new title. That was the title that Joe, um, hired her under.
I thought it was only equity, something.
No, it was, it was economic development, equity coordinator, correct? That was always the title. Yeah.
Oh, well, you know, we never actually got it.
Right. We talked, we talked about that. Yeah.
Um, okay. And so in that responsibility will be managing grants or helping to search, seek out grants and then manage them.
Right. And that's, and that's not new. That was in the, you know.
I'm just, just for my own clarity. And so then, but other department heads will still be having to do so themselves then. Because I, I still think that's a very cumbersome job for one person to support everybody.
So up until this point, um, so we will have two people because Christopher has been doing it up until this point. Um, being the grant administrator and making the reports. So now you'll have two people and Bonnie also gave us the, um, was it the, the link that you sent me where department heads can go and search?
Okay.
So each department head will have access, have, does have access to that. So they should be actively, and this is something that we'll need a little education on when we have our department head meetings to make sure that everyone knows the site, know that they have access so that they can go out there and look at what might pertain to their department. And then they would get with Katie, um, to get the grant written.
Okay. So I, I understand and support all of this. I do want to still emphasize the reason that I brought this up is I still think that in order for us to really effectively do this, we eventually will need a dedicated person or people um, who are doing it and not in conjunction with their job. I understand the, the, the cost saving that we're, we're trying to, look, not even cost saving, just to keep us out of further deficit. Um, but I still think like, that's a lot for department heads and Christopher and Katie to be doing while also managing several other things. Um, so I just want to keep it front of mind. I, that is just a, like a, you know, a pet project of mine for the future that we can try to figure out how we can support that, even if we get a grant to support that um, in the future.
Mm-hmm. Um. And so we, I was looking at the, the duties, trying to see, cause it's not a full-time. It doesn't merit being a full-time, um, position. However, um, I think we just need to, to change how we approach it because now we're at a position where we need revenue. And so if the department has a project, right, that you want, you know that the city doesn't have funding. So I think now we just need to implement this, you know, as a part of what you do. You know, I'll go out there and see if there's some funding for this.
Oh, yeah.
We haven't done that before.
Disagree with any of that.
Yes, yes.
Saying is, I mean, you know, we, sometimes we talk about our, our online.
Mm-hmm.
We have dedicated staff to do this to make sure that not only are they sought out, but also they're managed properly.
Mm-hmm.
I'm look, I'm thinking of Christopher's position. He's not only, you know, in planning, but he's also the DDA director.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at Katie now doing economic development and equity.
There's a lot of room for Katie to do this.
Oh, no, no. Again, this is not an argument.
I'm just saying because we're auditing, seeing what's actually happening.
I'm just saying that I want to keep it at the forefront of something that we're thinking about because there are opportunities that I think, you know, especially in talking to other municipalities that we could potentially miss because that is not anyone's area of expertise. People are just adding it on to their job. And so, you know, going forward, I think that's something to think about so that we don't miss opportunities.
So I think it's, it is a part of Katie's expertise because it was a part of the posting when she got the job.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
I appreciate that. I'm not taking away from what Katie's abilities are. I'm just simply stating that I think that there are opportunities that we have cut, been cut close or we have not been able to pursue because people have a million other things that they're doing.
Well, that job is being currently defined as well. So I think we have to take the opportunity to steer her in the right directions too. Because I have to admit, I was trying to figure out what she was actually supposed to be doing. And so.
We talked about that.
Yeah. So, um, because I wasn't the hiring, you know, person. And so now I'm trying to figure out and trying to make sure that, um, her position is falling in line. So that'll be something that we will have to steer.
Appreciate it. Katie, I look forward to all the grants you're going to bring in for us. I just want the rest of the body to know. I think this is more than a split position and it should be a dedicated person in the future. Not this year, maybe next year, but it's something that I will continue to bring forth. Um, because large organizations, um, and even smaller ones have dedicated folks to this work to make sure that we are not missing opportunities. And I just want to keep that front of mind. That's all, that's the only thing I was trying to say. Keep it front of mind that I don't want to burden someone, um, or any of the department heads in doing this when that is not outside of Katie, their area of expertise. Um, in terms of, I just want to clarify in terms of the housing trust fund. So the barrier busters was removed as a, its own singular line item to be included in the amount that would be earmarked or set aside for housing.
Correct.
Okay. Other council members, uh, you know. Councilmember Sweet.
Um, on page ninety-four or ninety-three and ninety-four of the packet where it goes over general fund adjustments. And there's highlighted sections there. I guess I'm just, can you clarify what the two differences in the two pages are and what the highlighted sections mean on them both? Because I was having a hard, because.
Reagan, can you go to the microphone while I sign back in?
So I, I took the general fund adjustments one oh one, that first, first spreadsheet.
And then there's another one after.
Yeah, then there's another one. This, the first one is the, what staff is recommending.
Okay.
On that, and again, like there has been no amendments to the budget that council has made. So nothing has necessarily been changed yet, but this is just what, uh, the, the budget team is suggest, suggesting. That second page is just, um, what the, the, basically it, things that staff had suggested that were already removing.
Yeah. It's kind of what I was saying verbally, but they're highlighted.
I guess I understand what Evan is, it's confusing because there's, there's a little, a couple more things highlighted on the first page and then on the second one. The not, the, the final.
Turtles are different.
Total is different.
Correct.
Fun balance. And so what's the difference between the two pages?
So I think we added. There's ones that are not highlighted on the second page. This, these cuts are only based off what staff has suggested. This is what we're re- recommending from what was brought up by council in the previous meeting on the sixteenth. So like the non-arm response team, we're, we're recommending that we, we try to examine that regionally. The, let's see, barrier busters and commission field day were suggesting not to do that and to fund barrier busters through the housing trust fund. So. So those are things that, these are just suggestions. And right now, the only only changes that are being made to the budget is what we've removed that staff suggested.
Ah, so the second one is what's already been removed that you suggest staff has suggested.
Okay. Includes those as well.
So that was like, I don't know if it's.
Hard time determining what the different indications were.
Okay. Is that your only question?
I just have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
And then on the capital improvement. Four-one-four account, this is page ninety-seven. Frances, could you again clarify, you said these these amendments are additions or removes?
Removed.
Removes, so that anything under amendment is a removal. Okay.
It's a hundred thousand total.
Yep, okay. That answers my question.
Mayor Proton.
In in on that same page, um what is the status of the ventilation and fire suppression at this senior center? I mean.
That was i- i- it's being suggested that we just half that. It's still gonna continue forward. It's just gonna be half for this specific year. But I believe Bonnie could speak to that.
Was the total typically, is it forty thousand and now only, okay, so twenty thousand is being removed or doing half of that, okay? Mayor Proton, do you have additional questions?
I will later. I'm still trying to wrap my head around those two pages because words didn't do it. If I had them side by side, I could.
Council member Dee Simmons, I saw your hand, I think.
Thanks. Uh, so I have a couple of questions and comments. So one, I would say in terms of the non-arm response. I think one thing is just for clarity, you know, I was naming based on I don't think, well, let me back up. Based on the conversation and thinking about the amount, I don't think that kind of putting forward, whether it's for vehicles dispatch really matters, right? So um what I'm proposing is that we actually put forward something within a, like, we know that there's actually things happening now and uh funds are needed by programs to actually do work now. That is actually that to directly uh deal with community mental health uh and public safety now, right? And so in that we actually have an opportunity to do that and and I'm not sure I really like the phrase like skin in the game, but you know, naming that uh the city of Ypsilanti probably needs to put some skin in the game in terms of actually addressing these issues head-on. Um and more directly. So I just wanted to say that that I I actually think it's a higher priority because I see it as something that kind of comes and goes. And I think at the end of the day, a lot of these things are going to be happening regionally. And there'll be a probably a lot of the same groups doing the work regionally. Um but without funding so that they can actually be successful um as they're getting started, then they're always going to be coming from behind. So um I want to say that first. Um and then kind of going through this, I had a couple of kind of questions and thoughts in terms of some of these different amounts. Um I'm wondering, so in terms of thinking about, for instance, barrier busters moving into housing trust fund, coming out of that space, is it because all of barrier busters money is related to housing directly?
Um, no, actually it isn't because I believe barrier busters dealt with utility payments and all kinds of other things. It was just and it did deal deal with a lot of rental payments as well. So it was because it was all, it was related. Not just all housing though.
Well, I mean, I'm wondering in terms of what does, why, what does it do for us to kind of put it there? Because one of the things, for instance, with the way that the money from the housing trust fund was used previously, it was actually used to purchase property, right? Which is different than kind of doing things for like individual, like trying to help be a safety net for folks. So I I'm just trying to figure out why would, why we move that there. Cause it makes it look like we're putting in the same amount that was put in previously, but then that's not the case.
Historically, the barrier busters um allocation was drawn from the housing trust fund. That's, that's what the reasoning behind.
Is that, did we take it out of there?
Before what we did was when we funded the, we created the new fund, uh the housing trust fund. So we moved, I think, same amount. And then from that fund, we paid uh twenty-five to barrier busters. Cause it's just an allocation. So when we, when we created the fund, we created like uh some funding. And then part of that fund, we were spending it for barrier busters. So what we're, what we're suggesting is uh instead of doing a whole hundred thousand and then eventually paying an additional twenty-five thousand to barrier busters, we just put it all together.
It appears that we didn't use, that we had funding there, you know? So we used it for barrier busters. Um, did we even use any other funding out of um the housing trust fund last year besides the barrier busters?
Yes, we did. I think uh we uh we purchased some property. Um I could take a look on the details on that one because uh as of now, there's zero in that.
Believe it was the two oh six two ten North Washington.
Right.
But that was a pass-through, so that that's the only property that we purchased through that that account.
And so, and so council doesn't necessarily know when things are spent out of the housing trust fund. So it might be used for other budgetary needs. So even though it's supposed to be earmarked for housing-related needs, it could be used for other related.
No, it will be used for housing, but we don't know yet. So it's like we created another bucket of money. So we, it's like we created a new bucket, we put in hundred thousand in there for housing. And then eventually, if we want to use part of that money for housing, then we could draw from it. But for now, what we're suggesting is we put hundred thousand in that bucket, but twenty-five thousand of that uh money is now earmarked to barrier busters. So basically, there's only seventy-five thousand that we could use for another housing project.
And again, I'd like to point out that there's actually now no money allocated to that right now because no amendments have been made to allocate.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm just gonna go through my questions before I start making amendments and things. And then, um, okay, and then I want to say too, so in terms of the commission fair and field day, um that, well, I'll I'll come back. But I actually think one of the things with a lot of the different events that I mean, we probably all can recognize as we go to events, we meet people at them, is that a lot of people are actually not necessarily living in the city proper. Um, a lot of folks that go to these events are coming from other places and they're also really targeted also by population, demographic and things of that sort. And so I would, I would say that in order for us, if we wanted to um try to somehow get the blanket and also in terms of thinking about our commi- our current commissioners and folks that we would want to have in the space. Like they're not gonna come, go to every event, right? So I don't think that we would necessarily get the coverage that we're looking for in that way. Um and I also see this event, um, you know, playing other roles in terms of connecting um our community directly to um to to one another. And ways that we're actually looking at, how are we building community to solve these big issues? Um even things like, um I know this, I'm not sure where this came up, but I know um like council member Sweet had sent something around like snow buddies and you know, all these different things that we might want to start at these different levels. We actually need to have, I think, focus um spaces to be able to talk about neighborhood level kinds of activities and engagements. Um that can't happen when it's like people are kind of passing through, you know, and I've also tabled at these events too. Like if people are here for one specific thing. Like you might get them if you're giving away a free T-shirt, which I will say, people love the Ypsilanti T-shirts. They probably would stop if we were giving them away. Or selling them as a revenue source, we could sell them too. Um, okay, um but anyway, so I just wanted to say that about the thinking about the partnerships. I think if we wanted to get the kind of spread that it would take, we would have to do um a lot more to actually get that if we're trying to address the issues that we have and the lack of engagement um at our commission level. The other thing I wanted to ask about, so for these non-motorized projects. I just wanted some clarity on these or like what might be suggested. Like when I see like non-motorized neighborhood connectors and like signage, I'm wondering what is that? What does that mean? Like what does that represent?
That was his, yeah, that was yours.
Um, and I also, I think I I put that in for only twenty-five thousand. The non-motorized committee has been looking at uh paths through the city for per cycling and other non-motorized uh conveyance. And they have this project. So I talked with the folks on the um Mike Davis Junior, who works for MDOT, who's also on planning commission. Their priorities are such that they're looking more for twenty-four. They want to, they want to prioritize those things. I said, you know, I had proposed this and that, you know, that was there. And he was like, you know, we could put that off a year. And come back to, you know, council with a better proposal, a more detailed priority list for it. So the seventy-five thousand, I I recall putting it in at twenty-five thousand and and with what they're, what he had said. Um, that could go away easily enough. I'm I'm not sure what the mandatory non-motorized features are.
Ninety-five, I think it says twenty-five thousand.
What's that?
On page, it says twenty-five thousand.
Oh, I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the memo right now.
Is that the Act fifty-one requirement?
Over ten years. It's really, I'm just looking on the memo.
I mean, right now, I'm just looking at the memo. I'm just trying to understand the different parts.
The the seventy-five thousand in the memo was a typo.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, I took it, yeah, yeah.
I'll continue while you're looking for that, just um the other, so then the other thing is, so with the tot lot amenities, so over three years, I want to just make sure that um it's been verified that all of the tot lots that need to be upgraded. Um I heard that one of them was recently upgraded already. Um, the one in near Park Ridge, I think. Well, I I know the one that is on Charles Street has had most of the stuff removed. So I think that that's the challenge. So right now it's just empty things where there used to be tot lot things to play on. So, so yeah, so the thing is that they've all had things removed, but not necessarily have had more place gate, more playthings added. Yeah. So I'm, I mean, I'm just saying, so like, so I'm just trying to think, I'm just trying to like think about, so we think about what we'd be asking for and maybe, I don't know if you have specific thought, like looking to have more equipment added. And then if it's spread by three years, it might be each one, like one of the tot lots a year kind of thing would be the expectation.
You're asking me?
I'm asking you, I'm just trying to, I was like, well, I wasn't sure like if you, because you, I know you put this one forward, so I wasn't sure.
Right, so as Bonnie indicated, right, they all have the same currently. Um and that was done intentionally, right? So this could be used in a, in a multitude of ways, either to do it incrementally, like you mentioned, and to do it's not to replace, at least in my mind, it wasn't to replace the things that are current, it was to add additional. So, and that could be done as, you know, they all get the same thing in the same year or it's a course of each year they rotate, like what's also been done in the past, so.
Okay.
But they all currently have the same
Pieces now.
Different size lots and properties, but same equipment.
Right, great.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you. And then um for the youth mini-grant, um so a question I have, so as we've talked about these in the past, and I know that we're changing, the the process has been changed, so we hope that that improves some things, um. Uh, but I also wonder, because there's been money left in that one too, so um and also thinking about what um I mean, I'm trying to think about like, kind of like how what's happening within those things are like directly tied to goals of what we're trying to see happen by putting forward the mini-grants, right? So, um, like how, how are we kind of measuring whether just like the youth mini-grants overall are working? And then also what the uh amount is, if it's not necessarily, you know, maybe at first it was being utilized because it was new. And then um and the org, the orgs in the space applied and got it. And so, I don't know, maybe we've covered the, you know, who's gonna apply for that. Since it's been a couple of years. I think. All right, I think those are my general questions. Now, and then I want to come back with some proposals.
Um, all right, before we do that, any other questions? Um, oh, what was presented from council?
I'm still a little baffled by the grant writer, so we, I understand the positions that are there. Fifty thousand dollars of the in the memo is to be used for what? Is that for trying to hire somebody? Is that to supplement Katie's?
That's removed? The fifty thousand dollars is salary based off of the state average. Um, I, I requested uh from running townships if they had a position like this. And I heard back that one, one jurisdiction contracts out, another one just doesn't have one, another one just doesn't have one. Um, and in my research, I only saw that five oh one C threes typically had this. So it's, this is just the average that I was able to find. So this would be a salary plus, plus thirty thousand of uh.
No, 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 I didn't say that.
And so on page ninety-four, that is not funded. Thank you. Maybe I should stop looking at the memo, maybe not.
Yeah, the the one with the highlight is actually what is is there and coming out. The ninety-three and ninety-four.
It seems like we have two, two huge items um that are on here. One is the the elevator.
The roof, yeah.
And the roof. And so that's almost a million dollars there. So was, were both of those included in the calculation for the deficit the first time?
The roof wasn't.
Only three hundred thousand for the elevator and then the roof wasn't included.
And but we had to add a hundred and fifty thousand to the elevator. We essentially added six hundred and fifty. This time that wasn't there. Five hundred for the roof and the additional one fifty for the elevator.
With the proposed rem, items to remove, right? What is the deficit that it would leave us at?
It was, if we were, let's say we were. It was, if we were, let's say we were to amend all of this the way it's presented, what would it then leave us at?
It'd still be at two point seven, yeah.
Oh, even with those things subtracted? Ah, okay.
First it was lower, and then we had to put the five hundred in there.
Okay.
With that.
Okay.
We started out at one point, we started out at one point eight deficit.
The, the five hundred thousand is the cheapest option for the roof.
So, yeah, we started out with the one point eight million deficit, then we added things and we got to uh two point eight. And then we made suggestions.
So we need to remove more things. Is, so the, this baseline of the, the highlighted things is this idea, and we actually need to remove more. Because I feel like that should have been the first thing that was said, because I'm like, oh, this is going to help, it's not, okay. That changes my perspective on something, okay. Um, Mayor Proton, sorry, you were, you were asking.
Uh, yeah, I was just following up on the questions with the youth mini grant, so that, my understanding is that has been funded at twenty-five thousand dollars per year for the last several years, it just hasn't been, it hasn't all been used, and we've, the most we've used is like ten thousand dollars on it. In any one year.
Yeah. We never use it all, though, yeah.
Right. So that's neither here nor there, so I'm not sure why that's on here as an amendment, but, um, that's.
Because that was something that was added during our last, yeah, last meeting, I mean.
Councilmember Thompson brought that up.
These are all things that we brought for, we brought for our last meeting.
Right, but I don't know why we brought it forward if it was always a continuous line of funding.
Because it's not, it's not a continuous line of.
We have to add it every year, okay. My bad. I don't have any other questions, Ed.
All right, um, quest, more questions, any more questions? All right, um, we can then, I mean, the floor is open to make amendments, to offer suggestions, um, because we have to make, we need to balance this budget, so that's our ability.
I'd like to make an amendment to the youth mini grant, changing it from the twenty-five, what it is now, to ten thousand. Bringing up fifteen thousand dollars. I saw a move to make that amendment.
Support. It's been moved and supported, discussion on reducing the youth mini grants from twenty-five thousand to ten thousand.
Wouldn't that have to be an amendment to actually add ten thousand?
Correct, that's, that's what I wrote.
Okay, yeah, so it'd be to add ten, yeah, because nothing's actually in the budget right now, those things. Um, all right, discussion to change the addition to ten thousand from twenty-five. Councilmember Sweet.
The other thing is, do we just need to consider what was written into how many, what amount of increments each group can apply for to make it less? We want to make it more.
Is it a thousand? Because it was above that before.
It was.
It was five thousand.
Now it's a thousand.
So, that'd be a question for a different day, that we'd have to amend that policy.
Let's see.
Okay, that's it.
We can lower that number.
Yeah, so that it's more, yeah, yeah.
Or it can just give it to fewer orgs.
Or, or that too.
That too. Is there further discussion on adding ten thousand rather than twenty-five? Kalanga, please call the room.
Councilmember Jay Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
One thing in, for ten thousand, we have, we're still at a two point eight million dollar deficit here, okay. All right, no, um, all right, next, other amendments.
I have a question about the, uh, the roof. Um, do we have to make an amendment to include the roof?
Mandatory?
Because it wasn't in, and it's mandatory, so.
It wa, it was not included. Isn't that correct, Reagan?
I move to, uh, include five hundred thousand earmarked for, uh, the roof at the, um, DPS.
Support.
Discussion on adding the five hundred thousand for our roof. Really, we have to do it, so.
Yeah.
There's no other.
Unfortunately, kicked the can.
Yeah, we got way too far down wrong here, so.
Saw before?
I, no, I know that.
I gotta fix it.
All right, um, seeing none on the roof, Kalanga, please call the room.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
I think mine got kicked in the next year, my fifty thousand, right, with the drains, so.
So that doesn't even have, it's not even in.
Right, it's not even in.
All right.
I want to amend the field day to five thousand dollars, adding that to five thousand. For the community engagement.
You have to move and have it supported.
I move to amend the field day to five thousand dollars.
Support the commissions?
Yes.
I'll support. Okay, discussion on five thousand dollars for commission fair and field day.
I would, I think it's a fantastic idea, and I would love to start it, but I'm not sure, I, I know it's, it's only five thousand dollars, I'm really torn. Because, I don't know, these are just, I don't know where to trip away at this stuff.
I know, I don't know what to do. I, I have a, so this is a question for myself included, and I'm saying it out loud, is taking this on, for instance, in the next year, something that council can shoulder, rather than allocating funds, like can we, as a body, try to figure out how we get people to support this so that we can still do something, rather than allocate the, in this coming budget for it?
I'm just wondering how it would be done. That's all, you know, who would be in charge of this?
I, I'm only saying that because I'm thinking like, I'm again, I'm in, and, and I'm in process of trying to think about this, but it's kind of like how we do, you know, we do a coffee hour, you do your, um, you know, ward meetings, or could we come together with our, you know, neighborhood association, I, I don't know, and figure out how to do this so that we can, you know, like, get the ball rolling and then see what happens later, is that impossible? I'm just literally saying it. I mean, I would, I, I mean, I mean, y'all know my feeling on it, I would love, um, I would love to have a plan and think about ways that, um, council can kind of hold some of these things to help get things going, so I think that that's a good, like, question, it's just about implementation, um, because I think that we're at this issue because of a lack of implementation at that level. One, one thing I might say is that I know that some of us are doing a subgroup, um, working on kind of thinking about commissions and things overall, um, and where, like, how, where things would sit in terms of planning and things like that, might be more clear after we go through that process, so so maybe, you know, maybe this could be one of those things that we kind of keep at the forefront, and we know we want to plan toward having, um, and we kind of put it forward to be able to be worked on across some time, so that it can be really, um, you know, that it can have the time it needs to have really good turnout, because I think, you know, that, that would be one of the things is that we're trying to do something different, to actually engage our residents directly. So that would be something, you know, maybe we could think about, um, you know, if we're not look, if we're not ready to necessarily fund this yet, because we need, you know, some, you know, more clarity around some of the logistics. That, that could be something that could be pulled forward in terms of as we're looking at these commissions overall. I agree, I feel like we can pull our heads together as you all are doing your work on the subcommittee about the commissions to see what it would even look like, what would costs be, what would we need? And then maybe come back to this, even with an amendment later, if we, if we need to, to add it in, because we, we amend all year long, so. Um, because I do, so I support this, honestly, but thinking about that astronomical number we have right now, I know it seems like a little piece, but everything's a lot to me in this moment. Do we want to, do we have some consensus on this? Do we want to vote?
I know, I, I agree, I agree.
Can we, can we, can they take it off the table then, it's rather than voting?
Just, you just, uh, remove the motion or remove the support instead.
So I just have to remove the motion to add five thousand dollars to the budget.
Thing I'll remove. I do, I do want us to continue looking at it, I do want, I was very excited about this idea, so I do want us to do it, but we can, we can definitely figure out a way maybe to get the logistics figured out before we move forward.
And then, do we have the elevator?
Oh, we, was elevator already in there? It was already in, right?
We had to amend the, uh.
Off of the hundred and fifty thousand.
Um, so I move to add in, is it hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, um, elevator repairs, uh, is required to meet ADA standards.
And I support.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved and supported, this is mandatory, we don't have much of a choice. So, which is, which is great, we want the elevator to be, yes, we want it to be well.
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, is there any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, Kalanga, please call the room.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen. Mayor Brown. Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
And just for clarity, originally it was three hundred thousand, and we just added one fifty additional, so it's four fifty total, okay. Thank you. More amendments or discussion in the midst of amendments?
There have been, these are suggestion, the suggested removals, but they were never in the budget to begin, right, right? Well, at the other page.
Oh, yeah, I know. So I have, um, uh, I'm just trying to go through these, so, one, I, I have, um, I'd like to make a motion to add so I guess I would say, um, seventy-five thousand to the housing trust fund with fifty thousand being the addition that, um, was part of the community benefits agreement um, for the Matty Dorsey Estates project, um, fifty thousand, I think, was part of that, and then um, the twenty-five, that's being earmarked for barrier busters. So then, um, so then having that be at a total of seventy-five thousand to be used for housing related as well as barrier busters related needs.
Support.
Moving supported, any discussion? So, for clarity, so instead of the hundred thousand that we see here, it'd be seventy-five with fifty going towards Dorsey Estates basically, and twenty-five for barrier busters in the housing trust fund. Not that it's going toward Dorsey. I mean, sorry, but allocated to the housing trust fund based on the community benefits agreement, yeah, sorry, I said it wrong, my apologies. Um, so it'd be seventy-five total.
Seventy-five total.
Any discussion, question?
Wish we had like a check or tape or something with the numbers going up.
Writing them, I'm writing them, I'm, I'm mathing over here, I am doing math.
Right, the original proposal was a hundred thousand.
Okay.
We're taking it to seventy.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Mayor Proton.
Just a question, if you could rhyme, remind me again of what the CBA or Dorsey Estates had stipulated for the use of the funding.
The stipulation was just that we would be adding fifty K annually to the housing trust fund.
Not so much for specific purposes, but.
To the, for the fund, yes.
You have something else?
Yep. Okay, if there's, is there further discussion on this amendment?
Mr. Barr? So we agreed to that in the community benefits ordinance, right, so we have a requirement to. As it relates to the.
That's a contract that was signed, that we would.
That we put fifty thousand towards the housing trusts in the CBA.
So, okay, thank you, um, so then the fifty thousand, right, is, is what we agreed to, the, the other twenty-five thousand, it's going into the same pot for the same purpose.
Well, the twenty-five thousand will be going to our barrier busters.
Oh, sorry, specifically, okay, all right.
That's just a line item. Uh, understand, okay, got it, got it. Have we tended, well, we tended to use all of our barrier busters money.
Quickly.
Like immediately. Yeah, that's why, I mean, that's why I figure is that we do tend, I feel like that is something that we do tend to use, so. Um, our, our zip codes are the highest users and the quickest users. Um, and we clearly know why, this is why we are working on housing and all of that. Okay.
What do we have now?
Right now, we're at, if we add this seventy-five, then we are at seven hundred and thirty-five thousand additional to the two point eight that we're already under, correct?
Would, I believe the, wait, two point seven, it was included, it included the five hundred thousand.
Okay.
It included the a hundred and fifty thousand, and we just see these amendments made.
Yeah, it includes some of these, it looks like it includes some of these other things that are on here.
Okay, well, we asked that like fifteen minutes ago, and it was.
I'm looking, I'm just looking at these, because you can see, like, some of the things that are highlighted, you see where there's money or not money, so some of those things are included in that, even. So right now, then we, we're only adding about, so we have, yeah, so it took into account, like, all of the amounts that we put forward.
So, so far, we've removed, uh, twenty-five, forty thousand dollars from that.
Two point seven?
Or the two point seven?
Oh, grand, okay.
I didn't hand it out, though. So now we're at like two point three.
Almost there.
We're almost at two point three, all right.
Oh, my God, I don't even know the number now, okay. Okay, can, all right. Mark Alunga, can you please just explain that one more time, because I think we asked the question earlier, and then we were, it was said that, no, none of these things are in there with the two point eight million.
Well, we, we did not add any of what council has, yeah, we had, did put the DPS roof in there, and then we did put the hundred and fifty thousand, because we knew that.
That we had to do those things. Okay.
Is that correct, Reagan? Was a fif, five hundred thousand dollars in there? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it wasn't included, but it was, it was factored into that, that two point seven, right?
We did add it. I want to get super elementary, with the roof and the elevator, without any other things we've even added, what was the deficit number that we would be at, without even the stuff we just added? Because the, the things that were already.
We were already at one.
I mean.
So, uh, just to be clear, we're starting off with one point eight, so, uh, in summary, uh, first, twenty-two, twenty-three, the, our current fiscal year, we're projecting a surplus of one point three million. Okay, so our current fund balance is ten million forty. Now we're adding the surplus from, for this, for this current year, one point three, we'll end up with eleven point four million. And then for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, with our management proposed budget, we're looking at a shortfall of one point eight million, so from eleven point four million, less the one point eight million, we're at nine point five million. So now we're looking into the council adjustments, so now that's where we're gonna add the roof, five hundred thousand. And then all the other, what are, what do we approve, so?
I, if you look at that first page, you have the one point eight is, or the, yeah, one point eight is the deficit, and then if you go down to the council adjustment, that's eight eight five, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, so you just add those two together, correct, Reagan?
What page number is that?
Uh, it's the first page of the spreadsheet, ninety-three.
What do you mean, ninety-three? Okay, oh, okay. So our council adjustment, if we were to add all the things, would have been eight hundred and.
So, so right now, from what was approved, it was twenty-five thousand dollars. twenty-five thousand dollars out of that one hundred thousand dollars for the housing trust fund.
Hmm.
And then fifteen thousand dollars out of that youth mini grant. So you would subtract that from that eight, eight, five.
Thank you. That's where I'm trying to get, okay.
So it's eight fifty-five.
I don't know where I, I'm not seeing eight, but that's okay. Oh, I see.
Okay.
Oh, eight, hmm, eight forty-five.
Yeah, because instead of a hundred, we're, we're trying to do seventy-five, right? Okay. Thank you.
But so in that, yeah, and so five hundred of that is the roof that was added, right? So that's not necessarily all, that's just, yeah, okay. Uh as well as these other things are.
Right now, we have on the floor the seventy-five thousand for the housing trust that has not yet been voted on.
Correct.
Alright, is there more discussion on that addition?
So in order to be compliant with the community benefits agreement that came out of Dorsey Estates, we have to have at least fifty thousand dollars.
But that couldn't be put into the, the, like, barrier busters, part of that fifty thousand.
I was just wondering, you know. I don't know the rules.
Which is, just as a result of that CBA, we need to allocate fifty thousand dollars to that, but that, that funding could be used for anyone.
That fifty thousand, you could use, you could, wouldn't use, okay.
Fifty and twenty-five, twenty-five, rather.
Right.
That's, oh, that's what you're getting.
Or whatever.
Well, see, I don't think that that, see, I think that the barrier busters money coming out of housing trust fund is different than the use of the housing trust fund. Like if, so if let's remember again how we use the money that was in the housing trust fund previously, which was to purchase property. And so, which we could use it for other things, a hundred percent. But, like, what is gonna give us a possibility of being able to use it for something that is uh transformative? It's not gonna be like ten thousand dollars, right? Like, that's not gonna, so.
We did use that line item for barrier busters before.
No, I understand that. But I, but I'm just saying in terms of when I hear, when I, I wasn't aware that that's how, that money from, was being used from there for barrier busters um in lieu of for direct for house, you know, when I hear housing, when I hear housing, I think money's going for house, right? So I understand that that's how it was used. I'm just saying that I would, I would argue that if they're saying money to the housing trust fund, it's not to go to barrier busters or other kind of social spending that we would do necessarily. But, I mean, we could always try it out, I guess.
Yeah, I know, I know. We're caught between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah.
Because whatever, I'm, I'm just trying to look at what other chunks do we have to carve out more. I, I, I mean, it's, yeah. What other big chunks do we have here? That we can either not.
Well, we have an amendment on the floor.
Yeah, right, you're right.
For that, seventy-five thousand dollars. So that is the discussion.
Yeah, so it sounds like are people wanting to change that amount?
Do I have a question? Can I ask a question?
Can I ask a question?
So you keep talking about other uses besides buying property. Can you, did, can you elaborate on that?
Like, in terms of other things that I could see the money going toward? Um, I think that I could see money in the housing trust fund maybe going to support, for instance, um, if we wanted to do a program to fix the roofs of, for people who are, you know, elderly and the roofs are falling in, because we see a lot of that in the city. If we wanted to do a program from that, I could see that being something that I could see housing trust fund money being used for to help keep people in their homes. Any, well, I guess anything. So I guess I would say any kind of thing that would help keep folks in their homes, things to help provide more affordable housing, things to um uh I feel like I could have a more exhaustive list than I do right now. Um, but I could see like other uses. So, for instance, like rent support, you know, which I know barrier busters is just one of the things that happens for that. Like, I would see that as being like a, you know, a, a use that I could see coming out of housing trust fund monies. So, I could see a lot of the things. I'm just saying that it's not all, because it's not all related to that, so.
So, second question, is there other sources of funding and other programs where that funding would be available to people that say? And this is, this is the basic question I ask with everything on here is like, is there another source of funding outside of the city that can accomplish that goal? Um, and I'm not singling this out. I'm, that's how I'm thinking about all of this stuff that's here. Um.
In terms of for barrier busters? Is that your question or in terms of?
Uh, the, the housing stuff, you know, is this.
I would say obviously not. Who we have?
No, I, I don't know if I would say not. I think there are other, there are other.
There are other programs that exist right now that do some of those same things. They are, there's not enough um to support all the people, folks who would need it. I do think that even the way you just described, though, um, council member Dee Simmons, I hate saying Dee Simmons, like all of it, but um with barrier busters, that, that does meet some of what you were discussing though about helping to keep people in their homes, right? In the, in the meantime, and we know that this is highly utilized and that it is exhausted when we have supported it for our community members. Um, so I, I do think that, like, I, I totally understand other options for ways to spend the money, but we know that this is a need and it's being used um by our residents. So I do, I do think that, you know, I I'm, I, I have neither here nor there about the seventy-five, but I do think the twenty-five is being utilized and I, I think that should stay.
Hmm.
Um.
Do we have to, what, do we have to have a specific line item for barrier busters? Or is there any flexibility? Like, I, I, right, I mean, there's so, we, so much money is needed to per support and I mean.
So, right now, there isn't. That's what they're suggesting is that there's not a line item. They removed it and then they're just saying that it would be earmarked within the housing trust fund.
No, I know. And so where I'm stuck is again, I mean, we, we have this obligation of the fifty thousand dollars and you know, so I'm thinking like, you know, if we say, hey, we're gonna do the fifty thousand dollars again, because given the large budget shortfall that we're dealing with um, that instead of necessarily specifically earmarking, or I guess we could, but I don't think we can because of the CBA, but I'm just saying, we said fifty thousand dollars and then we can make choices about, you know, if that's part of that camp is gonna be used for barrier busters or if there's something that we've been aspiring to, to, you know, try to accomplish, like an opportunity comes up to do something, or maybe there's a pilot project with, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, um I'm just trying to think, how do we meet our obligation, but then we have finding places to kind of cut.
Hmm.
I don't know. It's, it's, we probably need to play Lotto.
So are you suggest, well?
Well, I was offering up like, if, 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 I mean, I'm just saying like, um, you know, amending this to say like fifty thou, you know, putting fifty thousand dollars onto the housing equity fund as, as required and then not necessarily line item any barrier busters, but obviously pulling it like we have in the past for barrier busters and I don't know, I, you know, it's, there's no like good answers here, you know, like. I agree. Because I'm trying to figure out like, what are the core things like we have to cover? And then some of our aspirational things, you know, maybe we, we unfortunately have to get creative with or wait until we figure out how we're generating more revenue or, I, I don't know. There's no good answers.
Yeah, no, this is not easy work.
So, wait, were you making an amendment or?
An amendment on the floor right now by you, by you?
And you.
So.
I know, but if she was making.
If it's friendly, but.
I, well, I, I don't know if I'm, I guess something is asking. I don't know, I, I, I'm just telling you where I'm struggling or something. It's just, it's just not great. I mean, I would like to, so. I don't know whether there are big chunks that we have that are sitting before us that we can be kind of trip away at the shortfall, but then also add value. As we take it off. What do we say? The tot lot amenities?
Forty thousand.
I know.
Well, we haven't added those yet.
Right, it hasn't added.
We've only removed forty thousand from what was presented.
Hmm. So, alright, because I'm gonna go down fast.
So then we need to, or we do that. There is an amendment on the floor for seventy-five thousand to the housing trust. We can vote on it and vote it up or down and then get back to the drawing board or you can amend it right now, but we, we have to do something about this before we can move on to something else, so.
I guess I'm making a friendly amendment to fifty thousand dollars to the housing equity fund and yeah, I don't know if we can include the barrier busters, but that meets our obligation under the community benefits agreement and then, you know, we could utilize. I don't have a problem, I, line item mean that, but I don't know if we can you know, say, hey, fifty grand plus chunk of that's going here. So transferring that in and then you know, whatever portion could be used for barrier busters and or other, you know.
So maybe we can be, so, wait, was I the one who started this one? Um, okay, wait, was it?
Yeah.
You, councilmember King, supported it and I'm.
Oh, okay.
Just one, okay. So, okay, so then if we amend it, maybe instead of saying all of those things, if we amend it, like in terms of uh barrier busters and all of that, maybe we could just amend it to um you know, to the fifty thousand, to the housing trust fund. And then as things come up, we just have to decide and know what we're doing, where we're pulling from. So. I'm happy to accept that amendment. You have to also.
Support? Oh, so do I accept or support? Oh, hey, I accept.
Can, can, can you repeat the amendment?
So now the uh motion is to allocate fifty thousand dollars to the housing trust fund. Right.
Okay, so I know, I'm about to stir the pot. So, uh, I, I know, I, I am cool with the fifty. I do I do think the twenty-five K should be earmarked barrier busters because we know it's a need and we know it's working. And we were told that we can do that because there was no definition for what the housing trust fund can be used for, but the CBA requires that we says that we add fifty thousand to it.
Okay, so you're saying add fifty thousand with twenty-five thousand earmarked? Okay, I didn't know if we could do that because that was, I was.
My knowledge, we can.
Okay.
Um.
I think that would be, that would be a different motion.
Right, so that's, I know, I said I was stirring the pot, because I'm, I'm stirring the pot on the motion that was just friendly.
So do we need this one first and then another motion?
You don't need, you, you could, yeah, you could make another motion to take twenty-five thousand dollars.
Friendly yet, I guess?
They, they would have to do it. Mayor Proton.
Ask a question. That twenty-five, earmarking that twenty-five thousand right now. In the past, when we have given money to barrier busters, that's been throughout the year as a member.
No, it was added at one time um in the budget in the past.
Twenty-twenty-one, it was added in the budget to give seventy-five thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars to barrier busters from the housing trust fund. But that you don't necessarily need to do it now. If, if we would still need to yeah, you don't need to do that now, it could come later.
I agree that we don't, but I know, but when we don't, we don't come back to certain things. We have not done that.
And I think we hadn't talked about barrier busters at the beginning of the budget time. So it was kind of an amendment later to take it from there.
So then there was conversation around that because everything had been removed and we were supposed to come back as a body and bring back those other pieces that we had taken out and then it never came back.
Right.
I'm concerned that if we don't do this.
I think you can do it now and it's okay.
Yeah, we won't come back to it. Again, I could be a one man army here with that, but I think we have, we have not come back to those things in the past and then it doesn't happen.
Mayor, so uh if in the future, we're gonna get an invoice for a twenty-five thousand dollar amount, then we will have to come back to council.
Right.
Or council to approve for that particular invoice.
Hmm.
So uh you can now put in some allocation to that tr- trust fund and then once uh barrier busters request for that invoice, then it will come back to council and it's up to council if you would like to approve the twenty-five thousand dollars to barrier busters.
And we have to just know that we have to just believe that they're gonna give us an invoice of twenty-five thousand and not forty thousand? You, you know, like, how do we, how do we manage that part?
So um the budget is gonna be fifty thousand and it's up to them. As long as we don't go over fifty thousand, they could request the for the full amount or.
And that's why I don't, I don't want that to happen.
Well, you could also amend it.
Okay, it's okay.
We're not obligated to give them any money.
Right.
Okay. And I'm saying if you put it here, when we get an invoice, it wouldn't necessarily have to come back because I can prove it. Because it's done.
Because it's already there.
But I think um, so member Simmons, right, we, I mean, the thought was that there could be some utilization of some of that money though for other things. So it's like, I don't, you know, I don't necessarily wanna say like, hey, that fifty grand is just for barrier busters, right?
Right, that's what I'm, I don't weigh.
So is it better for us to just earmark it so it's kind of set and then there's twenty-five thousand at least for maybe some other?
That's, that's what I.
But we can, you know.
That's what I would prefer, again.
Okay.
I'm one vote. But that's what I would.
You know, I'm a team player, y'all. That would make it more. So, um, I don't know in terms of like overall, like stipulations or what this means, but I, I do think it's good practice for us to uh put forward the funds um that are laid out in the CBA for us to do that. And so I'm happy to accept the amendments and then for us to know that this will, will circle back and kind of keep an eye on this too, and also be able to have some time to, to think about, you know, I think in the, you know, in the future, right? Like as we're talking about housing overall, like maybe we should also talk about a strategy for ways that we can um use the trust fund more specifically, right? So we can identify targets of how we would wanna use these funds and then that might actually give us a better sense of how much funds we need to actually put in there to realize those plans. Um, so to me, I would say like this is just lifting up the need for further conversation and planning and strategy in this area. And I'm happy for us to kind of be starting that and to see where those areas are.
Thank you. So are we all, are we, so Andrew, did you get that?
So, the, it's add fifty thousand dollars to the housing trust fund with twenty-five thousand dollars allocated to the barrier busters, to barrier busters. Is that correct?
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Alright, alright. Uh, I'm hoping there's no further discussion, but if there is.
Alright, click. Look, like a police collar.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wolf Caxton?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Hey, so for us mathematicians over here, now we're subtracting fifty more thousand because we had a hundred on here. I'm only put a hundred in.
Where does that leave us?
I'm doing math, hold on.
So, I have the calculation here. As of now, we've added seven hundred ten thousand to the original one point eight million.
So right about even at two point five, right?
So then, I'm sorry, just what is, so what is, what is the deficit?
Point six, actually.
It's, we've added.
So it's at two point five.
Yeah, this is not easy. Okay. Okay, and so, sorry, I, I, you know, I don't know why this is so hard, but I see the items in yellow. I'm on page number ninety-three. The ones in yellow essentially were, were they removed from the total?
Ninety-three is at the first page or second?
First.
Ninety-three is the second.
Oh, yeah.
Even the yellow, okay, okay.
These are the things they're recommending that we don't do, so they're just highlighting, like.
This one says removed and has fifty. Most of the other ones don't have numbers.
Okay.
Ones that don't have numbers were.
We're not.
Those numbers out, because this is what we're suggesting. On the next page, you'll see that the, those are not highlighted and those numbers are still present.
So, yeah, so that's, so part of that is like there's this transfer to parking, EV charging, remove fifty thousand. And and then also some of these different things so that have changed, you know, some of these things haven't yet been added that aren't highlighted. Right? So some of the things that we haven't yet added um are not highlighted on here, but then some of those amounts have changed, like the unique youth mini grant for, as an example.
And now we have added that.
We had ten thousand for the youth mini grant. We added fifty thousand for the housing trust and then the elevator and.
One fifty.
Alright, so what about, let's go, can we go back to the tot lot amenities? Is that, is there a chunk that's there that we could, I'm just trying to look at where we've got big numbers.
So that we, we, we didn't recommend taking that out, but it hasn't been added yet, so.
Oh, my God, so that would add on to the two point five?
But it, but it's recommended to be added over.
It was coming out of the mental health village.
Yeah, that, and that hasn't been allocated. You haven't, you haven't budgeted that seventy-five thousand dollars in that lot. So we were talking like that, the possibilities that would come out that of that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we have programmed from the community mental health village. Or you don't do it and then that.
Twenty-five is still there.
Money remains.
Okay, and then, so I'm, cuz I'm trying to think here with recreational things, I guess. I don't know, resurfacing the pool. So that's the seventy-five thou, seventy thousand dollar spend?
That's not included in the budget.
The total price on that project is over two hundred thousand dollars and the friends of Rutherford Pool have been fundraising for all of that. Um, they're currently, that's what they're trying to use the Spark Grant for with the state was to try to be.
Yeah.
And so the friends of Rutherford Pool are competing with the city for that grant project. Prospect Park and Pool are in, would be trying to get the same grant. But they are trying to fundraise with other places as well, but really the place that they were going was with that and that would be competing with the city.
Yeah.
And when will they know, when will we know about who gets it? Or if anybody gets it, but any of our friends get it.
Yeah, it's like a win.
It's a, but it's a lose, win, win, win.
Bonnie?
Prospect.
There's, there's, there was talk about having be rounds of funding for the, uh, grant. One of those got removed. So Prospect Park went in for the second round?
Prospect Park went in for the first round and did not make the. So the next.
And is it the intention to put that back in for that round of funding? Okay, so that means that the friends of Rutherford Pool are fundraising outside of all of this to cover two hundred and some thousand dollars for a facility that the city owns.
Yeah.
But it hasn't contributed drastically to and, you know, I look at this and I go, you know, they're really pretty good at fundraising, but they've, they've lifted a heavy lift for several years.
Is there an, um? No, I, I was just gonna ask if there, I'm trying to think of, is there a way to split it somehow with the tot lot? I mean, I don't know, like with the mental health village or something.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing because Bonnie said, um, in order, she said the cost for the three tot lots should not exceed thirty thousand, ten thousand each. Each lot, so then that leaves some money that could go toward, um, the pool.
Okay, so if we did, then say thirty thousand and then, so the seventy thousand for the pool, is that, is that kind of like, how does that number arrive? Do you know, Steve?
I, I made that up.
Oh.
So what it does cover, what it does cover is there's certain parts of the, um, the total, um, there's parts of that project that are not specifically the resurfacing itself. And there's other costs associated with it. That's seventy thousand dollars basically covers those other costs associated with it.
Okay.
And so for the total of two hundred and eight, I think was the last estimate and it's gonna go up because, you know, they don't have that, that, uh, well, the cost of construction goes up.
Oh, okay, so I'm wondering like, do we have to commit to seventy right now? Like if we could commit to a, a smaller number and then address it later on, seeing where things go. I mean, we just got some nice savings, nice news from.
Sure, you know, if, if that, if the, the tot lot drops to thirty and this drops to fifty.
Right.
Then, then we've made some commitment and it's there, um, depending on, you know, what their, what their, uh, funding source looks like.
Okay.
But I know they're scrambling at this point because if there's, you can get grants for programming a whole lot faster than you can get grants for infrastructure.
Okay, alright, so, and there's, okay, so there's, there is a chance though that, right, maybe we get a grant and this somehow, some of it gets covered. Okay, and you don't wanna tweak that down to like maybe a forty thousand? I'm just trying to, I don't know, there's.
Actually thinking about not putting it in, but.
I also.
But I, but I, you know, it's.
Other, yeah.
A ten year history of this project, somebody has put up very little money.
Alright, so how about, how about, I'm gonna do a double. So, um, I move that we add in, I guess, thirty thousand dollars for tot lot amenities. And then I'm gonna split it in half and go, um, thirty-five thousand for resurfacing the pool. Nice move.
Part. Discussion. I'm gonna say I, uh, I was considering not adding it at all.
Okay. I can amend.
Um, no, no, I, this is discussion time. I'm, I'm like, uh, only because this is something that, again, if like, if grants are found and we need to amend later, could we?
Okay.
I, I don't know.
No, that's fine. I just wanna recognize like I think the pool is, is an important like social.
It is.
Place and, and well-being, but I guess I will do a friendly or amendment or. Well, if you guys, no, I, I'm hearing. Stay, okay.
It's coming from the community mental health.
Alright, okay. I don't know, we got, it's stressful.
It is, it's hard.
Your bills and.
Alright. Um, further discussion on thirty thousand for the tot lots and thirty-five thousand for the pool. Would these be across three years or would?
Still be across three years? So yeah, one time? Bonnie, Bonnie said that the tot lot should cost a lot less, so.
I did hear that, I kind of.
Oh, we did, okay, okay.
Right, because the seventy-five thousand in here said over three years, so.
Right, but it's not.
Which would have been twenty-five.
Right, per, per.
Now you said thirty thousand total, which.
Oh, so you can just do it at once.
The numbers keep getting better.
Alright, I can. I don't know. A mathematician, I'm a social worker, so you know, okay. Um, alright, so yes, it'd be at one time and get it all done at once rather than over three years and then thirty-five for the pool. That is the amendment on the. And then, and then for the pool, I mean, cuz that doesn't necessarily mean that that's like gonna close their gap or anything. They're still in fundraising. So, um, with no end in sight yet.
Right, and now, now the question is where, where do you even apply to get them? Um, I'm, I'm not sure that they have.
Um.
You're, but Steve, you're saying it's important to show, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you guys kind of were saying like, maybe don't put any money in the, for the pool, but the pool obviously is a super important community resource. I don't know, you know, so it's like, I don't know where we go with that. I understand like thirty grands not it, but, you know, I was just trying to kind of split it and.
Right, but lots of grants require matching.
Yeah.
So is.
Having that earmark and they can go and shop that and say, well.
Okay, so at least they've got, okay, alright.
There could be investment next budget cycle too in that too if they don't make their goal, right? I mean, long term.
Yes, that's true. Uh, further discussion on this amendment. Senator Kalanga, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen? Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Reagan, where are we now?
We're through everything.
Seven seventy-five.
Okay, that's the deficit?
No, I wish.
No, that's, that's, I just wanna know where we're at.
So we added to the.
Oh, my God.
So much we added to.
Six.
Oh, my God. Two point six million. Uh, there's American dollars.
We have a lot of cuts that we can make other than staff.
Right, so that's it.
Alright, so.
Are there things on this page that we have not addressed?
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Um, so I, I, uh, I just, I guess wanna say something for us for the future in terms of, um, I'm just playing in my brain, the idea. So I, I would just say, so when we're talking about, um, the unarmed, I wanted to say too, just again, that if Ann Arbor funds the pilot and the team, like they're putting out their RFPs during that process, just to know, right? Just so, for us to be clear too, that that's like, that's not gonna spill into the city of Ypsilanti, so that's one thing. So even though the idea of the regional approach with them, like that's still to fund within their city, so that doesn't fund things here. Um, and, um, but I do think that, uh, I, that it would make sense for us to go through and actually put time into doing than our own process because then we can also have a better match for what the costs actually might be. These costs are a part of what is currently still, you know, needed to be funded. Um, uh, but I did hear that, you know, in terms of what this city's, uh, process would be, I just don't wanna, I think it's something that we actually need to have cuz knowing how long it's taken for Ann Arbor to get to this point, it's been a long time, you know, and they're, as they're doing that. And so just wanting to know that I wanna come back and actually make sure that we are allocating time to building out what our own process and RFP would look like, um, so that we can have it ready before it kind of drags on for a long extended period of time, um, so that we can have something that we can do within our goal year or, you know, make some movement toward it within this goal year as opposed to waiting. So I think there's things that we can do to prepare even outside of allocating funds at this time. Um, which is to, you know, to do some deep diving into this and exploring the different possibilities and partners.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, I have a question for, um, Bonnie. Uh, maybe it was for Christopher. Maybe it's for. Is there anything in the budget for, for paving Frog Island?
Sorry.
You know, I, cuz it's not on here and we've talked about this and we said we're gonna make this a priority and I realized that it's kind of like, but we're talking about this stuff now, so I wanna hear about it. This is like, there wasn't a line item in the budget, right? For the entire amount? Okay.
Was there no funding from other source? I thought there was funding from other source. Oh, we are talking. Oh, we're in that stage of dating, not dating, sorry. Okay.
Okay. Hmm.
I went into the DPS roof. That's maybe where paving money went.
Um, wait a minute, remember what time are you, are you satisfied? You have another question?
Yeah, I, that, we're talking.
Okay, I know, like we've been doing a lot of talking.
Uh, Councilmember Sweet, your hand went up.
Oh, it was just a follow-up to Director Westler. Is that, was that the two hundred? What?
So formal.
Was that about, is that the two hundred thousand that you were referencing Bonnie, the Frog Island improvement? Is that what that number was from your original? I'm gonna make sure of that.
Yeah, also like to add one more thing. Another really needed one is the two hundred fifty thousand dollars for building inspections. Those are for the new developments and they'll be paid for by, uh,
Their own fee.
Building permits. Well, we do need to put that in the budget.
Okay. I move for building department, um,
Inspection.
Uh, inspections, support or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars support. It's been moving supported and we've been told that it's gonna pay for itself. Oh, hallelujah. Alright, you can ask a question.
I did see, I, I'm not, I don't even know what page I'm on, but, um, there was a recommendation, I think, for a few increases in fees just to help boost a little bit of revenue. Parking. Yeah, so, and I thought it was something, was there an inspection fee?
That we're going to examine potentially raising building department fees if, if we're able to buy both standards and then also raise parking fees, but we'll bring that forward.
Okay, so we don't need to deal with that as part of this. Okay, alright, thank you.
It's been moving supported. Are there questions, comments, discussion before we vote? Senator Kalanga, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown? Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Reagan. Where are we?
So, uh, total now is, uh, two point eight.
Yeah, but we know that's gonna pay for it, so. Tick, tick.
Cuz it, it's really an expense that we have to do because we did, we are gonna collect more business permits out of it, so.
Two point eight million. So what are we? We don't. I don't know where do we go from here? We are at, back at two point eight, which is what we started.
Yeah, we have another, uh, amendment there for the financial software of the city.
Wait. That's not in there, I thought.
It's not in there.
Uh, yeah, but then what we did was that was originally in the budget.
Okay.
So now if we're, we're, we're gonna remove it and that will decrease our.
Oh, cuz that was in the budget.
Okay.
It was in the. So we need to have someone amend to remove that.
Okay, I moved to do that.
Yeah.
Right now.
To remove the, sorry.
But, um, so far our software is able to do, uh, what we have to do for now and, uh, one of our projects is for us to be able to collect online payments and we'll be capable of doing that next, oh, soon.
So it's been moved.
Yep.
And supported. So question Reagan, do we need to do the same thing for this other, this transfer parking that's also on here? That's as addition of fifty thousand that says removed in yellow, but it's over. We would have to do the same kind of thing for that.
Same with the marijuana consultant.
So you wanna just bundle those?
Can we, can we bundle those removals?
So I'm gonna amend that then, I guess, to, I moved to remove the marijuana consultant, the financial software and was it the transfer parking, EV charging?
We didn't. Who, I don't know who's, who got the support in on it.
It was either you or Steve.
It was Steve.
They, I was just an amendment.
It was a friendly.
I guess.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No.
Wow. Uh, Stephen.
Uh, yeah, sure.
Okay.
So, okay.
So that's, that. That's been moved and so we can move the finance software, the marijuana consultant and the EV charging transfer park, transfer to parking. Alright.
What did we say?
Any discuss, any discussion? Clerk Kalanga, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen? Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet? Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
How much did we say? Two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Am I, is my math mathin'? I'm getting better.
And we officially entertain a motion to, um, to. No, um, to, uh, release the two million for the train.
I want to, baby.
No.
Why can't we?
Because then we'll be much better off.
Well, we will be.
Cuz we're not going to do that right now. We kinda gotta start over regionally.
I'm very interested in the conversation happening over there and using.
Okay.
Wait a second, alright, I'm on this train. I'm on the train too.
You want the train?
Oh, no.
And that's not gonna happen.
I, I, I mean, and it would, it would definitely help us in this case and I think whatever we do with the train, we have to start over with data.
Yeah.
You know, we can't.
I've been contacted by some of our surrounding municipalities to have discussion about this and we are gonna have to start over from what we've already, what has been done in previous.
Times may be better. We may have reaped some of the benefits from other developments, you know, when we get back into it. Um, you know.
When you say start over regionally, what, what kind of, what is that?
Well, we had not, um, pursued this, uh, um, regionally initially. We were doing it ourselves. And, um, so we did not have the ridership numbers or anything at that, at that point when we did go out for, for the, for the grant opportunity. So they kind of told us where we filled. So they kinda told us where we fell short at and they kinda like recommended that we collaborate as well. So if we were to pursue this in the future, I think that's where we need to start at. Um, regionally, trying to collaborate, to have, you know, something done. Um, and then we'd have to start over with um, getting the numbers that we needed for data, right? You gotta, you gotta have so much ridership um, to prove that this is actually going to be a benefit or a success. And we use the numbers that we had gotten from AAA TA. And all of that wasn't enough at that time. And it certainly isn't now after COVID. Um, the numbers were outdated. So we definitely need um, more up to date numbers.
But is that one of those things that if we remove it, we may not come back to it?
No.
I don't.
Well, that's it's, it's, it's different than like um, the programming. Because in my opinion, if we, if we move to collaborating with partners, then we have a way to like figure out who has, you skin in the game earlier, so I'm gonna use it again, skin in the game, and then what can they contribute? So we don't have to necessarily, maybe we don't have to put forward two million in the future for collaborating across, you know, organizations, communities.
I think it's, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I, well, and the important thing is like, we do have to protect our fund balance, right?
And into it.
Right, so um, I mean, I love the train. I want, I would love to have that make it happen. But yeah, at this point with this massive deficit, I just don't know that we can.
Leave that out there, dedicate it to that.
Yeah.
We know, maybe like eight hundred thousand. But it's, I mean, savings. Well, you know, if we add some, then I'm like, well, we can add something else. Well, well, no. No. The idea is to not deplete our fund balance. It's not to add more because there, there, it's not, there is not more, really, is what we're saying. That two million is, is earmarked for something specific. And if we add it back in, then we are supporting a healthy fund balance is what we need to do to get to a balanced budget.
And then, and then we regionally, we begin talks with um, superior township, you know, Pittsfield Township. Um, even going down to Dearborn, you know, we haven't done those, we haven't had those conversations and asked for other people to have skin in the game. We just kinda went out there on our own with the train.
I was gonna talk about it.
So we weren't successful.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
I am not at all interested in, in funding uh, Amtrak's station. They have ridership, they have customers. If they determine that there are enough customers coming here that they should.
They will do it.
Then they should be doing that. And that should not fall on us. And I think it was misplaced on us in the first place. Um, you know, and it was always this race between, you know, uh, particular elected officials who were, who were scheming to put it in the township. And so people got, got that competitive thing with the township. And I think it was just a uh, a a false dichotomy. Um, at that point and Pete Murdoch sat here and explained to everybody that this is not a commuter line. This is not fulfilling the purpose that a lot of people thought it was.
Nobody ever understood that.
And it's, if we're gonna put money into a right light rail system that is gonna help regionally with transportation, people beginning the jobs, then I'm all about that. But yeah, this, I'm not at all interested in subsidizing a train system that is already owned by the federal government.
Yeah, I'm with you, Steve.
I will never vote for that.
So I wanna make a.
Really, my only caution about releasing that, all of that money right now is you know, having something in reserve.
That's what I, the safety net.
So that's all.
And that's what I was gonna, I'm sorry.
It's kinda in our reserve.
Right, so we're.
We're not gonna take from.
We're gonna lose it.
Right.
But it, it kinda goes back into the fund balance because now we're not gonna spend it.
Right.
Is there any negative impact that any of our experts over here can see with us releasing those two million? Just asking for the good of the people, the body, the public?
Bonnie shook her head. It's good enough for me.
She shakes her head at me all the time. I don't know if that's a good.
I'm asking the question because, you know.
It's a real valid.
How about a to, like a, you know, a rep, uh, like a, you know, like a token one dollar, you know, how, you know, just. You know, it's symbolic, symbolic one dollar. Right. Yeah, all right, so.
All right.
So I, I guess, I mean, I love that, like, like, light rail and all that. I mean, I wish we were set up kinda like the East Coast or California, you know, it's, and I hope that's our future. But I think right now, given this uh, deficit and the um, you know, uh, protecting our fund balance, um, I move to remove the uh, two million dollar hole on the, the train station funds that, you know, the funds that were earmarked for the train station, which is, is two million dollars. Um, do I need to say it needs to go anywhere else or just say remove it? And put it into the general fund.
And that's. Thirty of the general fund, you just wanna uncommit two million for the train.
All right, I wanna uncommit two million dollars for the train.
And I support.
Yeah, it's removed and supported. Discussion on releasing the two million dollars. And.
What we look like now.
Oh, yeah, where are we at? Where is that?
But there will be no effect.
What?
On our, on our uh, shortfall. So cuz.
What will happen is you uncommit those funds and we still use the general fund to balance the budget, but now those funds are uncommitted, so they can be as our.
Uh, okay, Mr. Bar.
Okay, so I was.
Mr. Bar's hand up. Mr. Bar.
Reagan, don't do like a pounding talk, like, like the two million will help with the deficit. So then in theory, for my fuzzy math.
It's eight hundred thousand.
We're only.
Cur- currently, our fund balance is uh, at eleven, eleven point uh, four million.
That two man's in there.
And then that eleven point four million are in sub- subdivided into different categories. We have the, our committed fund balance, which includes the train. We have non-spendable fund balance, like our inventories, those are not real money, like our land, uh, that for resale. There's uh um, unassigned fund balance, which is uh, uh, what we look at on the strength of our uh, the strength of our financial standing. So when you uncommit the the committed fund balance of two million, you're now increasing part of your unassigned fund balance. So now that will, it will look like our uh, fund balance to, it'll make our uh, fund bal, unassigned fund balance better.
Sorry. But at the end of the day, Reagan, don't laugh.
Change the deficit.
At the end of the day, we're still subtracting.
It does. Right.
And, okay.
That's how it goes.
All right.
It's, it's like we have a reserve. It's, it's like our reserve and our reserves is subdivided into categories, but the, the reserve doesn't change.
Okay.
You still have eleven million.
Okay.
But then part of that eleven million.
He's not gonna arrest you for.
Still there in the, still there in the bank.
Okay.
So, yeah, and so instead of it being the eight million. That was in the reserve, it's ten million.
No, so.
That's what I look at. It's, it's the same.
Say you sell your house, you don't have to pay your mortgage anymore, so you could use that money for something else.
But that's what I'm looking, that's the same thing I'm saying.
Yeah, so uh, our ending fund balance after all this is eight point seven million. And that eight point seven million, part of that, two million there is for the train, is committed to funding the train.
Right, so pause for one second. So with that, how it stands, we only would have like the six point something million that we could have been using for anything cuz the two man was committed to this other thing. And, and now the two man is gonna be released, so we could use the whole eight million if we needed to, which, which we won't.
Which we want because we have a policy that we have to keep at least ten percent of our expenditure in our unassigned fund balance, which is around one point six million. So we should at least keep per our fund balance. But GFOA recommends that we should have at least two to three months of our uh, expenses, which is, we should be, we should at least have around four million dollars just to be on the safe side, just in case some catastrophic. So, so now we're at eight point seven million, so ba- basically we have four million of that, we, we, we have to always keep as our rainy day fund.
Okay.
I got that.
I don't know anymore.
You're set the same deficit, but there's just another way to pay for it.
Another way to cover it.
That's how I look at it.
In effect, look like then, what would that look like? Kind of, you know, we could check, we got, we're writing bills.
We got the same amount. But, but two million of it is not committed to something else.
I get it.
So now my savings account is looking two million dollars more because it's mine again, right? All right.
There we go, but I wanna pay my other bills here.
We are, because we'd be technically, we would be like four million, four point six, right, of money that we don't have, like two million that we can't use in two point eight that we had to spend. And now we're only spending the extra two point eight. We have two million more in our savings.
So then are we just like point eight million? The whole, that's.
No.
Can anyone help me?
Looks like Mr. Bar has something.
It is the same.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Still spending it.
We're still gonna spend the money that we just.
Oh, I know we're gonna spend it.
No, what I'm saying is, so but, but at the end of the day, what you're saying is that we're still saving in, in terms of, cuz that two million that was also allocated is now no longer gonna be for that thing. It's back into our account for us. So we had less money altogether. We just have been talking about it in that way to start.
Basically, we've, what we gained is some flexibility.
Correct.
Okay.
And a little bit more security, right?
Safety.
Right, so that's why we're saying. We just want you to nod at us, Reagan, and say that we'll all be okay.
Last roof last like thirty years.
I think we shall go take class.
So it sounds, it look like.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm married to.
Okay, thank you, Reagan. So we have, we have an amendment on the floor to remove this earmark, or whatever it's called, committed funds, uncommit the funds. Uh, is there any other discussion on this before we vote? Cuz I surely want to do that quickly.
Oh, it looks like Mr. Bar has something.
Oh, Mr. Bar has something else? You're asking us this question?
Here's the flexibility.
So that we could use it if we need to.
It'll make it look better when we get, when they look into our books. Or kinda, you know, it doesn't change a lot in like tangible, like, you know, tangible.
Flexibility and security of our, our fund balance, I guess. I mean, I was thinking.
So when, when, when GFOA looks at our uh, fund balance, then you have more in reserve.
Have more.
But one thing we have to consider in the future is not really our fund balance, but do we have a structural budget? Which means are our current revenues able to cover our current expenditures? And that's one thing I, I think we have to solve in the future cuz now, looking at our budget, we're having a two point six million shortfall and our fund balance covering that. And in the future, we're gonna run out of money.
Yeah.
Uh, per projection by John Kaiser.
Yeah.
So.
And so I think after, that, that was one of the things that I was, I'm gonna want to talk about after we vote on this, cuz I do want it to be really um, around, around that cuz we can't keep doing this.
Right.
Cuz no matter what we do, we're gonna run out of money. Boy.
We can't keep relying on marijuana.
We can't. No, we cannot. All right, seeing no more discussion on this amendment. Clark Alanga, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilcoxen. Wilcoxen.
Sure, yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, where are we now?
Same spot, cuz they doing.
No, no, I just mean like, what do we do now?
Oh, okay. Just prove the budget hasn't amended.
Okay, so, so that maybe I was, I was. Do we have ideas? Are there? So we said the only thing left we have was, would be to cut staff, you cut services, cut things that we cannot cut. We've added things that we think that are, that are mandatory and things that we feel like we need to, to fund. And we're still at this projected shortfall. Meaning that once we approve this, this will come out of our fund balance.
Right.
Barring that something doesn't change, we don't do something or it doesn't expand or whatever, we're projecting, we're planning to, to do that. So unless other folks have additional things that they think they can figure out.
I mean, at some point, I think we talked about um, asking for a headly rollback. You know, those are things that, you know, other potential revenue generators um, to fund operations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those are things that we, we could, you know, ask the voters for.
We can do that, so we can do that after we approve this.
Uh-huh.
And then make.
Seems that we're getting half of the fire, too.
Right.
If we get that, that.
If we get the full amount, then it'll bring it down, yep.
Are there any other things, you know, little irons in the fire that we think could be coming that would help us with this? Uh, I know, we know the fire.
So I mean, we are gonna generate some funds from the, the two developments. We just don't know what.
But will that, we, we wouldn't see that in this budget, would we?
Um.
Well, it hasn't come.
I don't know, Clark.
We wouldn't see that in this.
Not this time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, he said Clark won't be doing happy years, okay.
Yeah, okay.
But I mean, that's the look forward to, though, like.
And also uh, RPA to eighty-nine, we only budgeted fifty percent.
Yeah, that's what Wilcoxen said, yeah.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay. All right, so council. Are, is there additional, additional discussion, questions about what we have before us and where we are?
When is our Water Street Detmillage due to expire?
Yes, uh, twenty sixteen. Uh.
That's curious. We can talk about those things later.
Yeah. Don't, don't shake me off.
Okay.
So twenty twenty-six, you said?
Twenty thirty.
Already six.
Twenty thirty, I think twenty sixteen, that's the time.
Oh, twenty, yeah. That was in, that was on.
Twenty years, by that time.
Okay. I'm. Okay, seeing none. Clark Alanga, please call the roll on the amended budget.
Mayor Brown.
Oh, my, me? Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilcoxen.
Expecting Steve, but that's all.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Tell me Willie.
Motion carries unanimously.
Um, thank everybody. This is really, really, really hard stuff and this is one of the hardest budgets I think I've had to participate in and other than like Water Street stuff. Um, and it doesn't feel great, but we are gonna do our best to make sure we don't return here. Um, in the future. Uh, so again, thank y'all for this discussion and for getting this hashed out, even though it doesn't feel.
Doesn't feel.
Doesn't feel good. Um, Councilmember King, you have our final resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one oh six, resolution to approve adjustments to contract and fee schedule for the city's towing services contract with Wall Street Towing. Where's the city of Ypsilanti contracted with Wall Street Towing Incorporated DBA Budget, Budget Stadium Towing for towing services? And whereas the contract was extended to July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and the towing company requested contract adjustments and fee adjustment were inadvertently omitted from the legis- legislation. Now therefore, it is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the towing contract and fee schedule for the towing contract is adjusted as follows. So there was three changes, extra charge for dollies, it went from seventy-eight to ninety. Extra charge for, for flat beds went from one fifty to one eighty and storage is now thirty-six dollars. The rest will be read into the record, I thought move.
Or.
And moved and supported. Thank you. Do we have any presentation on this? Mr. Bar. Oh, Mr. Bar.
Yes, thank you. This came to my desk because I had information that the uh, is shown on the website. We're not matching what was intended in the contract. But when I looked into it, I found that the contract was extended, but there was a letter from the towing company that was not included in the. I found that the contract was extended, but there was a letter from the towing company that was not included in the packet. Not sure why. Though the contract was extended, but the requested fees were not included in it. What this resolution would do would be to bring it back to what was intended at the beginning and adjust the fees as required. So they can be adjusted on the city website.
And the fee schedules.
Thank you so much, Mr. Barr. Anything additional, any questions?
So I have just a some, I, a quick question. Mainly because maybe it's my eyeballs retired when I was reading this, because I was trying to figure out why are they talking about, like, in this memo about this? I wasn't really understanding how, why we're talking about the Washington County Sheriff's Office and how that's related to this, and also that there were changes in the amounts, where the city's amounts are much larger than the ones with the sheriffs. And things of that sort. So I just wasn't sure what that meant, or, yeah. And it also says, this part where it says, as you can see, YPD is more aggressive and recouping the human cost of the of their requirement. So I wasn't sure what that means. Like, is it that we it we have a high, it's a higher rate? Because we pass on this the cost more, or what that is trying to say?
Is a representative of the towing company here, if you'd like to hear?
Good evening, Mr. Solomon.
Hello?
The pricing that um, that we presented a year ago, w- we went and took a a survey of the surrounding areas and showed the fees in the area. So the prices that we have with the city, because we signed the contract in twenty nineteen, and it was extended for another two years, because it was a three-year contract with two, no, one, two-year renewal. So what we did was, we gave you guys a sample of the surrounding areas of what they charge. So we wanted to be uniform, so it was consistent with the state police, at the sheriff's office in the city of Ypsilanti.
And so this is showing that we are above the surrounding area.
No, you're consistent now. When we got the renewal last year, because it was, it was a three-year contract from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. You have an option on a two-year extension. So basically, the two-year extension that we, that you guys approved last year, ju- it it has the the increase included in it now. So it was a two-year extension with a price increase.
So is the, I think what she's asking is in the memo here that, or the letter that you all sent. It just shows you that the Washington County Sheriff, though, has not increased to that surrounding area number, but we have.
Negative. Well, when we.
Numbers are different.
Yes, because what happened is the sheriff actually has increased the fees as well.
At the time this letter was sent, they had not.
Correct, because it's a year old. It was, it was actually approved last, last year, I believe, and it it never reflected the increase, even though the increase was approved that night.
Thank, thank you.
But this letter is dated May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, so if it was approved last year, then why isn't it in the letter?
It was approved last year when it was brought to our attention. That's the date that you guys probably have in front of you, because we had to bring it back to you guys. Because we went to Mr. Barr's office, and they didn't have the copy of the letter either.
Oh, you just, so you had to gen- had to generate that?
Yes, tha- that was the date of the regeneration.
Okay, and these are prices that our residents pay for each of these different pieces? Or are these things that the city pays for um, things that are, that our department is having towed?
So here's the best part, city pays nothing. It's all goes back to the insurance. They have the insurance in an accident, or the residents. Okay, and we actually collect the administrative fee for you guys at no cost, and we get a bill every month that we pay back to the records department for all the fees that we collect for the city on behalf of the at no cost.
So that's the for the resident.
Well, i- i- it's anybody that gets towed in the city limits. It could be the residents, it could be somebody just passing through.
And then what your letter is saying, this is like standard car fees.
Correct, but the city doesn't, eh, you guys, the city itself doesn't pay for nothing. In fact, we we offer probably between a hundred probably a hundred and twenty services a year, complimentary to the city's own vehicles, police department, ordinance officers, uh, lockouts, jumpstarts, uh, toes to the dealerships. Yeah, the city doesn't really pay anything. Goes back to the, go ahead.
I do have a quick question. So I know my daughter was recently towed. And she had to pay about four hundred dollars. So how would that change if she, like, her or anybody else was towed? How much would they have to pay?
Depends on how long the car sits there, number one. Whether there's a city fee, well, there's always a city fee, and then depending on how long it's there. So every day it's there is their storage fees associated to the vehicle. So the prices vary, but I think the basic tow is anywhere from two ninety-five to three eighty-five, depending what a coupet was used to tow the car, so if the car's like four-wheel drive, you have to put dollies on it to make sure you don't ruin the transmission.
This other question I have, it might be more for our police chief, um, but want to bring this up, because I know this is a conversation that was happening before you started, which is that um, there were concerns that folks had lifted up, that they were being um, towed for not having car insurance. And um, and so that was causing an issue, um, especially on the south side, as I remember. This from, I feel like this was like at least a year or two ago, that this was being a big, you, yeah, you're remembering this. Um, and so I'm I'm trying to remember exactly where that was left off. I think it was that they were memoed that 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 this wasn't going to be a practice within YPD um, to ticket for this reason. And so I just want to lift that up to be, so that we're on watch, that we're not continuing that practice in some way, or having folks being in this situation to paying these prices for things like not having car insurance.
The memo was sent from our previous chief to all of the department, that the primary reason for a stop could, would not be expired in ex- insurance, due to um, the fact there's a lag in the update in the systems. If someone has either renewed or paid or not paid, like, you know, it's not always accurate at the time. And so the chief, while we didn't have to put it, they didn't put in any particular policy, there was an expectation to the entire department not, that they would not do that, basically. And so I don't know if anybody has shared any of that with you or not, but I do have, I ha- I'll email, I'll forward you what I have from um, our farmer chief, did you see on?
And I would like to add, we release seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, or most places, after five out of Friday. You're not getting your car till Monday, which is two, three extra days of storage. So we do release twenty-four hours a day.
Are there questions for Mr. Solomon? Or anything additional on this before we vote a vote?
So I I guess I just want to understand. So again, my daughter's car was towed, and I if I remember, it must have been a three eighty-five, but she went and got the car immediately. So she would, if somebody was to get towed, they would have this extra forty-five, twelve, and twelve.
So what, if you don't mind me asking, what was the reason for the tow?
She goes to school at Eastern, and she parked in in the park that, obviously, she couldn't park in.
She was told by Eastern?
No. I mean, I don't know exactly who told her, to be quite honest.
Because there isn't.
And I'm just, I'm just asking, like, what is the overall cost for a person once these fees are added? That's just my question, but I'm using my daughter as an example.
So depending if it's two-wheel drive, four-wheel drive, whether the front end was accessible, whether I had to set dollies, one eighty-two, seventy, forty-five, forty-five, two seventy, nineties, three sixty, plus the one-day storage, three ninety-five, give or take.
So it would only change from a three eighty-five to three ninety-five?
No, no, I, depending on what equipment was. The hookup fee plus the dollies, if that's what was needed. Then you got the the release fee by the city, the the secretary state fee, and then the storage fee. So whatever that all adds up to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, any other additional questions about the resolution or? All right, seeing none, Clark, Michael, please call the roll. Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons? Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilcox? Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, Board of Commission Liaison reports, Police Advisory Commission.
Um, with the Y-PAC, we met the, on the twenty-sixth of last month. Um, we're still looking for youth participation. Um, so if y'all got any youth that have an interest in participating and understanding the role of police in our community, please encourage them to come on down. Also, one thing that I noticed is, um, more, we need more attendance at the, at this commission, this, you know, I'm saying these meetings. So if anybody out there wants to attend virtually or in person, come on down. It's warm and welcome. And in the la- and and in the last meeting, we also had conversation about sending one of the um, um, missionaries to NACL, National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. So that's been in conversation, and, yeah, so that's all I have.
Was there any um, like, action sent about that, or just, just, just discussion about it?
Research has been done, trying to figure out how the body could either all go, or find one person to be able to go, and then seeing if the city would um, pay for that. So that's still in discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
HRC?
No update.
Arts Commission?
Uh, meets for the first time in a while this Thursday.
Arts and Rec?
Uh, June nineteenth is their next meeting. June twenty-sixth, thank you.
All right, um, eh, it's sustainability, sorry. We're meeting next week. HCC? Planning Commission?
Uh, nothing this time.
CBA? All right, awesome, thank you. Um, SNC?
Nothing at this time.
Watts?
No, nothing.
Um, Urban County, I think the next meeting is in two weeks or a week from now. Um, the DDA, first of all, next, it's next week. Uh, Friends Westford Pool.
Uh, looking for money. It's open, uh, it was great. It got, uh, they figured out the filming issue for, uh, earlier in the month. Um, it's been great to see people there. It's been a little cool. So, um, but the resurfacing is noticeable in that the current surface erodes every day with activity, and so you can go see all this stuff breaking down off of the surface um in the bottom of the pool. Other than that, um, you know, they've got money for, uh, there was a great turnout for the Volunteer Day. Had a lot of landscaping done, things like that. There was a huge line for uh, the lessons. So lots, lessons are all free, but it required that people go up, and so there was a line just to show how much this is used. There was a line out the driveway and down the sidewalk to the edge of the park. Lots of people showed up. They're very interested in having lessons. It's a great place for kids to be during the summer. I'm stepping off myself.
Thank you. Bicentennial.
Um, they had a successful day last weekend, selling some merchandise at the Normal Park Yard Sale. Continue to do promos for the two summer events.
Council Propose Business, Councilmember Tucson.
And so I want to bring to the community's attention that this, well, on June sixteenth, the Ballin Initiative is having Youth Day at the Park at the Magic Square, and the address for that is five fifty Perry Street, Ypsilanti, Michigan, right in our own backyard, at the Magic Square, has been recently repainted, and it looks amazing. So if you got any kids that want to come down there and play some basketball, three-on-three, bring them through. It's gonna be a great time. Barbecuing, e-gaming, I'll be there. Lots of people gonna be there. Come on down.
Can we get a council team together, a three?
Actually, hold on. Actually, I would definitely love to get a a a council basketball team going.
Power forward.
Power forward. I do play defense. I was, I was called Little Robin back in the day. Oh, wow.
See, look, look at, look at this. We can all just get out there and hoop together. Come on, let's do it. June sixteenth, I believe that's a Friday, if I'm not mistaken. It is a Friday, three P M. to six, at the Magic Square, recently painted, vibrant, beautiful. Come on down.
All right. Um, Councilmember Jason.
Um, yeah, I guess also for for the community, but also council, you may have received an email, but um, I promised my colleagues at the Dispute Resolution Center that I would bring this up, that we're having the Seventh Annual Unity Walk this Saturday from ten to three. And um, or, it's, it's a fundraiser, um, but it's also a great way to, you know, bring people together, and, um, but the fundraiser supports restorative justice programs, um, that are, you know, in partnership with the Washington County Prosecutor's Office. And so a lot of really great stuff. So I just wanted to share the information. Um, if you don't want to do the walk, you can just kind of show up at the um, end point, which I believe is at the um, A and E Church this year, as it was last year. Uh, sorry, Brown Chapel, yep, and um, there's a short walk, a long walk, but if you just want to end, end at the end point, uh, there's that as well. So anyway, um, great event. But just, that's all I wanted to mention today.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Um, it's June, but in preparation for winter. That's coming eventually. Um, we talked about some neighborhood snow removal assistance programs, so um, when you get a chance, um, and all of your inboxes is a information about, in our best snow removal program, that's a volunteer program for residents, um, that I know we've brought up at this table and has been brought up during every significant snowfall, so, um, something to look at and see how we may be able to launch something here.
This is awesome. I did this last year. I met EMU's Chief of Police and walked half the walk with him. I met a great number of people from the city of Ypsilanti, um, that I would not have met otherwise. It's not that long a walk. You get to meet lots of great people. Um, I'd like to expand on the snow buddies to, uh, recycling container buddies. Been talking with Director Wessler about alternatives for um, for people that are challenged by the size of those carts. Um, and and actually, it brings up a, an interesting point that uh, a lot of those people couldn't handle the red ones, the little red bins either, because you know, particular person in mind is ninety-one years old and weighs about ninety-one pounds. Um, and it's just not feasible. So we're thinking creatively about alternatives. Um, for those folks, um, it may come at a cost of um, compliance with recycling. And we don't want to confuse people with, uh, too many red bins sitting around, so that everybody starts putting their red. Um, we'll have to figure out a solution to that. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Bonnie, uh, for filling the sinkhole on Cortland. That was done quickly, um, and your attention to the alley on Grand Street.
And I also give a quick shout out to Bonnie for her help today and helping me get, uh, some signs that were needed for College Heights Neighborhood Association, and um, she can deliver the darn things to my door. I couldn't believe it.
This is the same day.
So, thank you.
The same day as the college.
I know it is, I know.
Um, I will be doing this. That's all I have. That's all I have.
All right, um, Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Thank you. Um, just a few quick things. One is I had um and was talking to a resident, they wanted to express appreciation and a good job well done uh for a tree removal that, um, and especially because they felt like the person came up with really good um uh suggestions for how to not mess with their plantings and their yard and felt really happy about it. So congratulations. Hum? On Charles. Um, the part of Charles that I live on. Um, and then uh, um, do 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 do. I also got a ti- a chance to take a little video of uh the recycling carts working, like being picked up by the truck and everything, and people seem to like seeing it. So that was good. Um, I just will continue to say, I I get continual outreach around speeding and driver, poor driver behaviors. So just naming. So everyone knows I'm still talking about it. Um, I uh, I had a good time at the Clark Road Groundbreaking with the folks on both sides of me. Uh, we were all there um for the Huron Vista. I I I, the resident, the residences at Huron, I think, might be the two names, but um, anyway, that went well, just to say that um that there's a lot of excitement there. Um, and uh, and it's in process. Um, just quickly, I I had a resident reach out about uh wanting an update about two twenty North Park um, and thinking about when construction would start. I did share the most recent update we had in terms of the change with the general contractor and financing um that then delayed uh construction, but I wasn't sure if there's more of an update in terms of when they might actually start that.
No. Not yet, anyone? I don't have an answer.
Okay, so we, the residents should still expect that there might be construction starting this summer. Okay, okay, so I'll just, I'll just let them know that, that I think that they're just waiting. They're like looking out for the trucks, you know, so I'll let them know about that. Um, I did want, let's see here, I have here, and I haven't gone through this yet, but there's some things. I'll be following up with you, Chief Moore. I know I have an outstanding request about um something, and then I just got this letter at about um some complaints around police behavior. And I will say that um a couple of weeks ago, I got two more. I had gotten two from other folks. Um, a lot of it is kind of um, this one is around uh community mental, like a mental health situation where the person felt that they were um kind of being chastised. Another situation was another kind of violent situation with a young person where they were kind of joking on scene. Um, and the other one was um uh, yeah, one where the where the witness was feeling like uh their behavior escalated a situation. So I'm just, you know, I haven't gone through this whole, this whole thing yet, but knowing that we will have follow-up because now it's feeling like it's just, this is now th- three times within, I think, the past month for me. So I want to just put that forward. Um and then I wanted to say too that um, so this is something I know that has come before council in the past, but uh, I'll probably be looking to bring something forward that, um, so I know there is a group of folks um, uh organizing around the state around um a repeal of the rent control preemption um, with a pretty wide coalition that's growing. Uh, and they're looking to uh localities um to show support of returning control to local hands uh for this purpose. And um, uh Detroit has put something forward and some others. So just so folks know, I'll be looking to bring something here for us to be considering around that. And then I also wanted to just create space, because I could do the update, but um for Mr. Barr, if you could just do a quick update in terms of where we are in terms of the lawsuit um, that was um put against the city by the five landlords uh regarding the voter information in the tenant and landlord handbook.
Yes. Today was, uh, I believe, the last day to respond to the complaint, the lawsuit filed against the city. The city insurance company has uh undertaken the defense of that, and they did file an answer in the case today. So that is at issue, and the case will be proceeding in the federal district court in that.
Thank you, Mr. Brian.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember King?
So first, I would like to say HBCU Day at Washtenaw Community College was amazing. I hope it's an event that they do every year. I just want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Ree for putting that event together. The other event I want to bring attention to is the Juneteenth Celebration. It's gonna be the twenty-fourth of June on a Saturday. And for more information or tickets, you can email communityforall22@gmail.com or call seven three four four three four eight four nine one. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and here's Jimmy. Um, also want to lift the Juneteenth weekend um here within the city, the, it's, what is it? Seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Um, the sixteenth, starting with some actual um Divine Nine presentation and HBU, HBCU um presentations on that evening. The day-long celebration on Saturday, followed by the Gospel Fest on Sunday. Um, and all types of other activities going on throughout, you know, each of those days um for Juneteenth within the city. Reminder that we are closed on that Monday, which is so exciting. Um, I also found the um email memo that was sent out from our previous chief to the department, so I'm gonna send that to you, Chief Moore, as well as council, for those who had not seen that. Um, and I'm also gonna CCU city managers, just so you know what I've sent, with a couple additional questions in there about follow-up for that. Uh, what has been done since, it was uh June of twenty twenty-two was when the email went out.
Okay.
Um, yes, and it did talk about that not being stopped, the the primary stop. Um, the sole reason for a stop, although it is legal, it is, it was talking about what is is just procedural justice. Um, and even though we can do something, should we be doing it? And I would like that to continue. Um, if the policy has already not actually been established, hoping that that happens. Um I have so many thoughts, but it's not, so um I'll just stop there. Um, but again, I just want to thank council and thank staff for what was uh interesting conversation, a tough one. Um, and just appreciative of everybody's commitment to, you know, working through this to the best of our ability, although we are not you know, probably leaving here feeling excited about it, but you know, it's a start. Um, city manager?
Thank you. I just want to thank um Mayor and Council for um passing the budget on tonight. And I also wanted to um lift up the Budget Committee and thank them for um their hard work, working um alongside me, that was Clerk Halinga, Finance Director, and our DPS Director.
So we will have um our Chapter Seven Work Session at our June twentieth meeting, so we'll be starting at six P M. Um, lots of six P M.'s this year. Um, every meeting's been at six, I mean, look. Anywho, this is our second opportunity for public comment. Anyone in the audience?
Anyone attending virtually would like to make comment, please raise your hand now.
All right, see, done, we'll close public con. Um, oh, you do have something for real?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Like, I'm like, I, you know, he asked for virtual comment and you're raising, I'm like, okay.
Um, I missed this, but um I wanted to thank everybody that came out for the Memorial Day procession. Um, it's been a while since we've done that. It was great. Keep there. Um, Andrew went above and beyond to get us flowers for uh the memorial.
That's what I usually do.
It was great. It was nice to to write that. Um, I think uh it was very short and sweet this year. A lot more people will chime in. When we came back to the car, somebody asked me about it, and when it started, it was like, we're done. Sorry, but, um, so there was interest in, I was good. But that's one of the processions in the city that I really think is um is important.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I just have to say this, it's just very, when I said that that memo went out in June of twenty twenty-two, it didn't even hit me for a minute that it is June of twenty twenty-three, even though I know it's June of twenty twenty-three, so it's been a year. So I I definitely need some updates on what's happened since then. Anywho, all, all minds clear. All right, the meeting's adjourned.
Not a moment too soon.